Welcome, everyone. I now call the January 10th, 2023 regular city council meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign up sheets were provided online by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldurks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For council attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. I will try to notice, Councilmember Aldurks. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval.
And Mayor, before we turn to the approval of the agenda, staff, over the last couple of days, we've been doing some additional work and would like to request to pull item 7B, it's Agenda Bill 23001, first of the year. The KNL Gates contract from tonight's agenda, we will anticipate bringing that back in February when there's some additional work tied up.
Fantastic. Before we move on, do I have a mo— how do we— Paul, can we do all these all in one motion?
On the consent agenda?
To remove the agenda.
To remove items and add them to the agenda and move things around?
Anyone can pull from the consent agenda.
Perfect, so we don't need a motion for that. Fantastic. Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah, I was going to ask that we move our public comment, our visitor comment, up to the front of the meeting because there's time constraints for some of our visitors tonight.
Works for me. Is that something we need to vote for?
That, because I think that one would need a motion and a second and a vote.
All right, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
And a second from Councilmember Dodd, I've got a motion on the floor, from Councilmember McNeil, a second from Councilmember Dodd to move public comment up immediately following meeting agenda approval. City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldurks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass at 7-0.
Thank you, city clerk. Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been advised by the city attorney that now is the most appropriate time to disclose that per RCW 4223030 and 4223040, I have a remote interest in AB 23-002, which is before council for first reading tonight. In order to provide full transparency and comply with these RCWs, I request the city clerk note, in the official minutes that I own 35 shares of T-Mobile U.S. Incorporated, a parent company of T-Mobile West LLC. My ownership stake in the $185 billion parent company is valued at $5,206.95 as of the close of trading on Monday, January 9th, and the 35 shares of common stock constitute 0.0000028% of the parent company's 1.24 billion outstanding shares.
Well, 35 whole shares. I own fewer in companies. All right, thank you for that. Moving on, seeing nobody else with their hands up, we're going to move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one person in the audience this evening who wishes to speak, who signed up to speak, and that's Ezekiel Bambolo. If you'll come up and just—you have three minutes. I'll start the timer and the button right there on the top of the microphone. Yep, just press it. There you go.
All right. My name is Ezekiel Bambolo, and I'm the executive director with Antioch Adoptions here in the area. And I just wanted to make a comment around the resolution on healthcare, reproductive healthcare resolution. And so my concern essentially is just that I wish, anyway, and how many of us have been injured critically and did not call an expert to come and take care of what we're dealing with, right? We're talking about some ladies here, and I see a lot of the reading the resolution, it quotes a lot of disproportionate impact on people of color, low income, and what have you. And some other things here also involving the pain and loss that people feel in these situations. My organization, along with another 30 or so organizations in this area, provides free support, whether it's adoption needs, whether it's oil change or what have you for young women who are in crisis trying to make decisions. Because every time, in fact, in the last 30 days, we've placed two babies in families in our local area here that are women that would not have to deal with the scars created by an abortion situation. I would hope that we would have been invited, as some of my peers and I would have been invited, to be a part of a serious conversation with the council about what some of these pains and losses mean, and do we have the resources right within our backyard to help some of these people that are in crisis? Because I think we do. We had a great conference at Cedar Park Church in Bothell about October 1st that amplified all of those resources being available, that there should be no reason for someone who is underprivileged or what have you to have to go through that scarring process. And I know we don't have enough time to go through all of that tonight. My hope is that instead of pushing this resolution through, that you have a good conversation with some of the experts in the industry that are dealing with these situations on an every single day basis, whether it's through foster care or private adoption. And I mean, that's as simple as it is. I don't think I even need the three minutes. I hope it's over. I don't care. I don't need the three minutes right now. I just wanted to say, please, instead of just not having enough chance to talk with the experts who are dealing with these young people every day and seeing this scars and the pain, in fact, in my comment, I put a link to a video that we did to show local businesses, local churches, and a right of organizations that said, whatever is required, we will provide as necessary to make sure that these young people don't have to go through these circumstances. So my request again is that hopefully, instead of passing a resolution, that we have a serious conversation, let's look at both sides of the conversation, not just narratives of what is happening, but more importantly, what are we really dealing with on a regular basis, and see if we can help each other out in this process. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. We also received five written comments. The first one is from Dennis Grode, and these were all emailed to the council and will be made part of the record. First one was from Dennis Grode, wrote in opposition of the reproductive healthcare resolution. Cindy Dahl wrote in opposition of the reproductive healthcare resolution. Kathleen Strunk wrote in opposition of the reproductive healthcare resolution. Dave Morgan wrote in opposition of the reproductive healthcare resolution. And Brad Payne wrote in opposition of the reproductive healthcare resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to presentations, reports, and briefings. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening and happy new year, city council. We do have two representatives here tonight from Sound Transit. We're joined by Faith Rollin, the director of real property, and Rick Kapka, who is a deputy program executive for Bus Rapid Transit tonight. We've invited Sound Transit here to present to council and also to, you know, as a way of outreach to the community, to provide an update about their right of way process for the STRIDE Bus Rapid Transit project, as well as they'll have a brief update too about the other bus rapid transit initiatives touching our borders. Just for, by way of background for council to contextualize here, there's approximately 40 parcels in Bothell with potential probable acquisitions specific to this project along 522. That'll be the focus of the property acquisition part, again, not the 405 project, but the 522. As you know, STRIDE is not a city project, but certainly there's a partnership and involvement with the city as well. The Sound Transit as an agency has full condemnation authority on property acquisitions. That intent is, once Sound Transit contemplates the property acquisition, the city will work with Sound Transit to do permanent easements and for acquisitions, the City of Bothell to incorporate it as part of our street right of way. So we will sync back up at the end of this. Because of that, the staff has been absolutely partnering with Sound Transit staff. We do have monthly check ins. There's bimonthly meetings with the agencies across BRT, and I really want to thank them for their partnership in this. And as things are, again, progressing, wanted to get some information out to the community. You may have seen that in November, the Sound Transit Board approved acquisition of 32 parcels within Bothell, and coming up at the next meeting on January 26th, the agenda will have a remaining eight parcels up for consideration, and those parcel information has been provided to you in an email last week. It's a long introduction, I know, but wanted to make sure, again, to contextualize what's happening here in Bothell, and then hear from our partners at Sound Transit about how they're making it happen. Also, staff does intend to be back in spring with some of the next steps around how we might administratively accept the property as permanent easement. So there's more to come on that, not the last appear of this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick and Faith, and again, just thank you to them, and then also to our colleague Ariel Taylor, who's here running slides for us tonight online. So Ariel, thank you for your time as well. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Kyle, for the introduction, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here this evening. Next slide, Ariel. Thank you for running those remotely. So I'm going to spend a few minutes tonight just giving you a very kind of high level kind of refresher overview of the Sound Transit Bus Rapid Transit project, and then I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Faith, and Faith is going to talk to you a little bit more about our real property acquisition and relocation process. Next slide, Ariel. So a little refresher on the program, next slide. So I think you all are familiar, the STRIDE Bus Rapid Transit program, when it is up and running, we will have three separate service lines that serve the greater community. The first service line is S1, that's going to run from Burien all the way up to Bellevue on the 405 corridor. You can see that on the map. The S2 line will run from Bellevue all the way up to Linwood on the 405 corridor. We do have several stops that run through the City of Bothell along that route. The S3 line will go east to west from Shoreline over to Bothell along the SR 522 and 523 corridors. On that service line, we've got four stations that will be serving the City of Bothell specifically. In addition to the service lines, I want to point out on the map in the upper right-hand corner, we are also building a bus operations and maintenance facility as part of this program. We call it Bus Base North, that is located in the City of Bothell in the Canyon Park Business Center. And the last thing I want to mention here on this slide is, progress-wise in our program, we're about at 60% design with many of our projects that will be part of the program. We currently anticipate being up and running for service in the 2027 timeframe. Next slide, Ariel. So this is a really high-level kind of picture of what our stations and our buses are going to look like, just to give you some perspective. The upper right-hand corner rendering is actually a rendering of a station here in Bothell. Our stations are going to be a lot like our light rail stations. We're going to have off board fare pay collection. We're also going to have real-time information systems that give riders, you know, real-time, up-to-date information in terms of bus departures and arrivals. In terms of the buses themselves, I'm excited to mention for our S3 corridor, we are using articulated, fully electric buses. We will have charging infrastructure on both sides of the S3 corridor to serve those buses. And for S1 and S2, we've got double-deck buses. We are looking closely at going fully electric with those as well, but those will be serving the 405 corridor. Next slide. And before turning it over to Faith, I want to mention a few opportunities coming up early this year for community engagement on our project. In the February-March timeframe, we are going to be hosting some online open houses, so interested community members can engage with us and find out more about the project. Shortly thereafter, in the spring, we'll be doing some actual in-person drop-in sessions to give more information to interested persons. And then we are always open to engaging with individual property owners or interested citizens that just want to know more about the project. We're happy to reach out and engage with them on a case-by-case basis. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Faith.
Thank you all. Thank you, and again, it's good to be back in Bothell. I'm an Ingleboro grad, I'll just say that, and I probably was one of the last classes to graduate at Popkinie in the rain a long time ago. So this is old home for me. Next slide, please, Ariel. I always like to start with what's important when it comes to buying land from folks for public infrastructure projects. Our job is to treat everybody fairly and with respect. That's important to me, it's important to my team and all the consultants that work with us, and we treat everybody consistently throughout the project. And so that's—I always like to lead with that and end with that because that's really what we do. I know it doesn't feel like it, it's scary for folks, it's concerning for folks, and so we really do work hard at spending time with folks to build that trust and give them information. We spend tax dollars wisely, that's our job, and so we account for those dollars and we pay the right amount. We can't pay too much, we can't pay too little. And our job is to acquire sufficient property rights to build, operate, maintain the transit system, not more and not less. Next slide, please. I always like to also remind folks how much regulation goes into the work we do. We're driven by the Uniform Act. Every project that we build, whether funded with local dollars or federal dollars, follows federal guidelines, and so that really is consistent across our projects. So you'll hear us talk about the Uniform Act from the '70s, that's really the driver for all public infrastructure projects. We have board policy, Sound Transit's acquisition and relocation policy and procedures drive us. We have the Federal Transit Agency Circular 5010 that gives us further direction, and of course, the code that drives how we follow our litigation process should we reach that point. Next slide, please. When we buy land, we either buy the whole thing, we buy part of it, or I buy a layer of rights on it, temporary or permanent. And this is how we start our process when we explain to property owners. In most of the projects that we're talking about today for the Bus Rapid Transit, we're buying very small slivers, small easement areas that are permanent easements but just an overlay of existing property, or we're buying a temporary construction easement. A lot of the project is built within existing right of way. The 522 corridor has a lot of right of way there. Some of it appears to be built out, as you know, with your work here in Bothell, and others maybe doesn't appear to be built out yet. But the existing right of way, we really have tried to modify and work with within the constraints of what's there, so we're buying as little as possible. Oftentimes, it's not clear, and I think that's where some of our issues are with folks is, well, my fence has been here for a long time, but my fence isn't necessarily on my property, it's actually in public right of way. So we're working through those issues parcel by parcel with folks. Next slide, please. So how do I get from blue lines on the map like you see on the left to that nice station that we have on the right? I mean, that's really the piece that oftentimes, when the public first hears about a project, I'm showing them the map on the left. You know, it sort of looks like, well, you're touching my property, but what are you doing? And so once we have that alignment, we go through our environmental process, and a record of decision is made, as you all are familiar, we then get to work, and that's when we really start talking to folks parcel by parcel with a lot more detail. You know, we figure out at this point, do we need a temporary impact or a permanent impact? Our ground survey work that we've been doing recently, especially along the 522 corridor, really is highlighted where the right of way is, and that's when we start working with folks. Next slide, please. As Kyle mentioned earlier, the board authorizes us to move forward on all acquisitions. Our fifth and final project authorization is upcoming. We have system expansion this Thursday, followed by our full board meeting in two weeks. And with each authorization that the board grants us, they also grant us the right to use eminent domain should that step be required. I'll tell you that on the average 200 parcel project, we probably have one or two properties that we don't reach agreement on. So while it feels like it's being authorized on the entire project, we really do work closely with each property owner to try to find a negotiated agreement. So I went back to the last five projects, and I had one to four parcels that actually were acquired through eminent domain in each of those projects, and that's buying thousands of properties. So I did want to assure you that we work very hard at that. We appraise each property. Every property owner is invited to participate, in fact, encouraged. We want them to tell us about their property, tell us why it's valuable and what it's worth. We follow the same relocation and acquisition process in parallel when we're going out to work with folks. There are very few relocations and displacements within this project. There aren't any in Bothell, so most of these are temporary construction easements and/or temporary easements for sidewalk and pedestrian safety improvements. But if somebody is displaced, we provide them all of the relocation benefits. We negotiate in good faith and avoid litigation. That's actually one of the shals in the Uniform Act. The Uniform Act gives me 243 things that I shall do, and 244 that I may do, just for the record. And so we are directed very clearly on how we process every acquisition. And good faith negotiations and avoid litigation is a shal in the Uniform Act. And we give notices along the way. Next slide, please. Every property owner has an agent assigned to them that makes sure that they're understanding the information we're giving them, whether it is a need for translation services, if they need legal services to review our information. Sound Transit reimburses up to $7,500 per property owner for reimbursement of legal fees associated with reviewing our information. We reimburse up to $5,000 per property owner for appraisal, should they want to get their own appraisal. And should they need to solicit an accountant to talk about the impacts to them, we reimburse up to $2,500. And if you've done acquisitions and followed WashDOT's procedures, that reimbursement is statutory at $750. So this is $15,000 worth of reimbursements that we provide to each property owner to work with us to analyze the information that are offered. We think that's above and beyond what most agencies are able to do. We do that because it really is how folks can see the information that we're giving them and analyze it, and helps us reach agreement. And in addition, should we have to relocate folks again, I said we provide move benefits and other things that are available from the start. The other reason that I always like to point out about eminent domain that gets lost, there's two benefits to eminent domain that every property owner receives. The first is that they have longer to reinvest under capital gains, and the second is that it helps waive the real estate excise tax for the transaction, and both of those are statutory once we authorize that eminent domain. So rather than just giving it to the person who is the person we can't reach agreement on, everybody in the project gets the same benefit. Next slide, please. And so as I said, every project does have the authorization at the front end with our board. I always say, you know, folks say, well, this is coming at me very quickly. I said, we do a lot of things well. We don't do acquisition quickly. It takes us about 18 to 24 months to acquire a parcel. It can happen a little bit quicker, but on average, it's about 18 to 24 months, from the time the project to be built is selected to when we actually can acquire property. So it is a slow, deliberate process, and there's a lot of opportunity to get information along the way. We do do some early acquisitions, you'll hear that occasionally when it's appropriate. This project are all acquisition authorizations after the record of decision was completed. And then, as Kyle mentioned, one of the things we do at the end is we work to close out those things that we've bought for a given jurisdiction, for the sidewalk improvements, the road widenings and the right of way. Then we work to convey that to the jurisdiction once the project's built. Next slide, please. So I'll start where I began, which is we treat everyone fairly and consistently and with respect. That's my commitment to you here, that's why we're here, that's why we're out working with each of the jurisdictions, each of the communities, small groups, individuals, to make sure that they have all the information and benefits available. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers Zornz?
Juan, thank you for this presentation. I know that we can be an exacting audience, so I appreciate you being here. I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm concerned about businesses being displaced, but I'm even more concerned about, you know, looking at where these are happening or currently afford, you know, homes that would fall within the affordable home category. And so can you tell me about how much of these are homes versus businesses that are being impacted, just roughly?
Sure. There are two businesses in Kenmore that are being impacted. Their access, they're right on the corner, and their access on Bothell Way is being impacted. And so there are two businesses that appear to be full acquisitions in Kenmore. There is one in the Shoreline Seattle part, I call it Shoreline Seattle because it's at the other end of the line, that again, is an access problem. So because they're right on a corner and driveways are on the corner, we are impacting their access. The team tries real hard to try to perfect that, and so to the extent we can perfect an access, we do try to do that. And so those are the three businesses that we're currently impacting. Residential, we have two folks that we haven't yet been able to perfect their driveway issues. They're quite steep slope, and once you improve the roadway, your steepness becomes more intense. And so we are working to see if we can regrade and not impact those or have a workaround, but those may be full acquisitions. Those are single-family residences. They're not in Bothell or Kenmore. I think they're both in Lake Porshberg.
Oh, we won't hear from those folks.
And then we have one duplex that we also are impacting that, and that would be in your category of affordable.
Okay.
And so again, we're trying to do workarounds, but it looks like we're impacting their access.
Well, it's going to be a lovely project when it's in place. And then in the acquisition, full, partial, and temporary, do you have questions that are raised, like if it's a partial, where it's substantial enough where a property owner would be saying, this is really affecting the value of what my property's left? Do you have those situations very often?
Not very often, but it's one of my shals. And the directive that we follow is that if we are buying a portion of a property, the appraisers look at the remainder, and if that remainder is uneconomic, we're obligated to offer to buy it.
Okay.
The landowner's not obligated to sell it to us.
Okay.
That's the difference on that piece.
All right.
And so if it's determined to be uneconomic or unviable, like you said, if we take somebody's driveway and they can't get in their garage, that can be—
Could be a problem.
Could be a problem.
Yeah.
And so we would offer to buy it. A landowner can say, I don't want to sell you my whole house, you know, I want you to sell it back, I'll keep it, and I'll tear it down and I'll rebuild myself a new house. I mean, that is one of their choices.
Okay.
And so that's how we work with each individual.
Okay, perfect. And then one other question. I was looking at your example, I think it was some Seattle, a Seattle line where there was acquisition and it moved. I noticed the properties that were—that, yeah, that one, that now had a buffer between themselves and traffic, now they're sitting right on traffic. Do you ever have neighbors who are directly not touched by their property— you understand where I'm going with this—but who say, oh my goodness, now this affects my property value?
It's closer to my backyard or my front yard. We actually have that along this quarter in a number of places.
And how do you manage that question, if I may ask?
Sure. Well, I mean, we will engage with those property owners and, you know, do the best we can to explain, you know, what the project is and what we're doing, and to the extent that we end up during construction, for example, working even closer to their property, we'll do our best to mitigate the impacts to their property and communicate with them all the way through, so.
Okay, so here's a question. Do you allow them to go through the process of getting their house appraised before and after, and so that they can, you know, in property value? after and so that they can, you know, in property value, where they could say, you know, it was worth X amount of dollars and now it's X minus Y when this project comes...
And actually, that's what our appraisal does too. And we encourage if they get their own appraisal to do a before and after appraisal. So our appraisal is a before and after analysis, which includes damages.
Okay. And that would happen to the neighboring properties besides the ones that are being acquired?
We do that per property being acquired. So if I don't need to buy Rick's property...
Right.
Then I don't appraise his property. Those impacts are only on the properties that we acquire.
Okay.
Be it temporary or permanent.
So it's really the neighbors that are not being acquired? It's they're, they don't have any assistance from Sound Transit on this? Is that right?
Yeah, I would say that our public outreach assists everybody during construction.
Okay.
So you're, I think I'm hearing you say construction impacts.
Right. Well, no, not only construction, but, you know, but I used to have street noise that was, you know, 100, 150 feet away and now it's 25 feet away.
There's a lot of noise studies done.
Yeah, I'll say during design, as we're progressing things and kind of, you know, figuring out exactly what the project's going to be, that type of feedback is useful for the project in terms of, you know, coming up with ways to mitigate some of those potential impacts. We do during the preliminary engineering phase of our projects, do detailed environmental analyses to study whether or not there are going to be additional noise impacts in the long run along the corridor. So, and I'll also say, as Faith mentioned, during construction impacts, we do have a robust community outreach team that works very hard with residents to, let's say, minimize impacts during construction. There's lots of things we can do to offer the residents, you know, temporary assistance to make their lives a little less frustrating during construction.
Good, good, good. That I've heard from neighbors on other projects, not related to transit, who would have appreciated some assists as well. So, okay, well, thank you. It'll be interesting and fun to watch this come together.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I look forward to seeing more Vikings graduate at Pop again and all the high schools we have here in the North Shore area. My question's around current ridership, future ridership. And we talk about impacts. Where are the majority of the ridership coming from now? Where do we see that ridership coming from?
I'm going to let you take ridership. I'm trying to think which direction.
Well, in terms of who's currently riding transit.
Yes, this project, this BRT project, where's the ridership coming from? It's going to mainly use this project specific?
It's coming from the local communities here. The folks that live along, for example, the 522 corridor are the folks that use the transit currently and are the ones that are going to use the new service once we're up and running.
And Councilmember McNeil, Ariel maybe offering an answer, but the other thing I would say is that, you know, we can always work with Sound Transit to get some more information and follow up with council since our partners here tonight are really more on the property acquisition side. But Ariel, I don't know if you have, that may have been your speaking point.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. I appreciate that. And I'm sorry, everybody, for not being there in person. I'm Ariel Taylor. I'm on the government relations team here at Sound Transit, especially for stride. We do have those ridership numbers and we are happy to pass along to this group. I'll go ahead and send them to Kyle and he can get them out to all of you. But what I will just say quickly is that the anticipated ridership for stride for this S3 service specifically, we are planning to have a lot of the current 522, ST Express 522, the bus that you might be seeing in your community now, a lot of those riders we anticipate will become stride riders when the service is up and running. King County Metro is also actually going to be benefiting from the capital improvements here in Bothell and along the entire route of what we call S3, the 522 line. So between, the number that we will give you will be between King County Metro and future stride ridership. We look at it all as like an entire transit community when we do those transit analyses.
Fabulous. And that kind of leads into why I was asking the question. When we have the conversation around property acquisition, what is the value? How do we value that? What does that ridership look like? So we're building out a system, so it's important to have the conversation around how it's impacting not just our community, but communities along the actual route itself. I wanted to ask a question around the $15,000 that's spent. Where does that, where does that $15,000 come from?
That's one of our project costs that we reimburse a landowner for. Those costs, it's a spend to get. So if they take our offer package to an attorney and that attorney charges them $2,000, then we reimburse for that $2,000.
Okay.
And so it's a reimbursable for them to go get their own appraisal, get their own legal analysis, get their own accountant to review the impacts to them.
Okay. And so is that part of like Sound Transit 3 funding?
It's part of every acquisition that we do on every alignment.
Okay, so those funds, those funds are coming out of ST3 funds?
Yes.
They're not additional funds, right?
No, correct.
That's correct. Okay, perfect. And then related to, specifically to property acquisitions, in an example, you have somebody who lives along the 522 corridor and they don't need to live in Bothell or Lake Forest Park or Kenmore. I'm just going to give you an example. If they have a property that they purchased for $400,000 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and we, Sound Transit needs to acquire their property for the project to move through, they do an appraisal and the appraisal comes back at 700,000. But that landowner's not able to find a property in and around the area for that price anymore because the prices have quadrupled. What happens in that situation? Are we relocating? Are they forced to relocate out? And I know you said only one or four people have, we've had that issue with, but I just, I want to know just for my sake, what does that, what does that look like for somebody?
I'll give you a bigger example using sort of your parameters, which, you know, the valuation is always current value. So it could be worth four times what they paid for it. It's current value and that's what they are paid. And in an average market, that is what they then can go spend to get a property. There are a lot of complexities to relocating for relocating a house. There are differentials that can be paid as a part of that if you're talking about a single-family residence, where we've offered them 700, but they can only find an $800,000 house. There's actually a differential reimbursement as a part of relocation benefits. Relocation benefits are different than acquisition. We buy dirt, we relocate personal property. There's mortgage rate differentials as part of relocation benefits. I had a 3% mortgage, now I can get a 5% mortgage. There's actually differential reimbursements as a part of relocation benefits.
Fabulous.
I didn't get into the weeds on that because...
No, you answered my question perfectly. So what you're, what you're telling me is that this is potentially a hardship on some folks. Maybe not everybody, but some folks, it might be a hardship. And to go out and get a loan today is far different than it was 10 years ago, right? So you're telling me that you're looking at that, which is, that's a positive thing. That's...
I'm not only looking at it, it's in the rules. It's one of my shals.
Okay, shals. Okay, I love that. And then I would agree with Councilmember Zorn's concern for businesses. You mentioned a couple of businesses in Kenmore. While those are not in Kenmore, it's still good for us to have an understanding of what that, what does that mean when you relocate a business and the business is impacted? And let's say a business has been in the community for 15 or 20 years. What are we doing to ensure that that business owner, if that's their livelihood, can continue to maintain a business, maybe within that same community? Or is that something your shal think about or work with as well?
We provide advisory services from day one, the minute we know somebody is going to be displaced, especially businesses. Businesses are unique because we, the thing we don't do is tell them that they have to stay in business. You know, a landowner can say, or a business owner can say, I'm out, I'm retiring. You know, you can still move me. Or they can say, I want to grow. I want to shrink. So we try to work with all of those parameters. I've had large and small. We have businesses that are a single storefront and we have businesses that are $2 million and $3 million relocation reimbursements. So the move expenses are not limited at all. The cost to move is not limited under relocation benefits. And the reestablishment, we provide up to $50,000 for them to reconnect something we've moved, that sort of thing. So relocation is a very complex and robust reimbursement program. And we try very hard to keep them in your community.
Well, that's great news. And I would say that as a council member, I always hear a lot about the negative side of things. That's why I ask these questions. It's important that, you know, we hear from our community and we're the voice for our community. And I would say if you can, in future presentations, can share some of the positive outcomes, that might be great for us to be able to share with our community. But thank you so much for your time and effort.
Happy to. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for being here. As a frequent 522, the express that you mentioned rider, I am really bummed that we don't have the double-decker for S3. I wish we had that, but I guess having electric buses will make up for it. So thank you for that. There was a slide that had bullet points of the outreach process. Was that in order or was that just, you just listed the bullet points? Because my question is, you know the properties you want to go after, right, as part of the planning. Do you talk to those folks upfront, like ahead of time, way ahead of time, ahead of all the town halls and community conversations?
Yeah, that slide wasn't in a particular order. But yes, so the properties that we know we will be impacting in subway shape or form, we engage with early and often. And there's a fairly robust process we go through with our community outreach group to engage and communicate early. And then at some point in time, a face team on real property takes over that communication once we get further along and we really define what it is that the project is going to be. So, so yes, that last bullet is actually something that happens much earlier in the process.
And that's what caught my attention, right, was this. So that's cool. Thank you. I appreciate it. I have a question about legality, about jurisdictions. Does Sound Transit jurisdiction override city of Bothell and all the cities along the way? Sorry. Okay, you'll answer.
I'm not sure if I can answer that now. Looking, I'd have to do some more research into where the jurisdictional overlap occurs.
Say, because, say along those lines of question, if like city council hears community, you know, you fill this place up with a bunch of people saying, we don't want it to be in there, can we do anything about it?
I might try to take a stab at this one, at least from the, this side of things. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. The Sound Transit Board has the ability, first of all, I should start out by saying, no, we work a lot, like the city has local control over a lot of what you guys do every day. We're working hand in hand with Kyle and his team on the development of the project. There, you know, we are a, an essential public facility in a lot of regards because we have a program that we're trying to build out. You know, we're not out there trying to like change your code or do anything like that. So when it comes to like the controls that the cities have, you still, you still have it. I'm going to say right now, I'm not an attorney, but we are working hand in hand with Kyle and the team. So while a community, let's say if a community was feeling very upset and they wanted their council to step in, obviously, we would be listening and we would be, you know, really coming at this with an empathetic tone here. We don't, we don't want to force something in where something doesn't fit. But I think that there is, we want to make sure that wherever we are building something, that we are leaving the community better than when we found it. So that's really where we're working with the local jurisdictions to make sure that it's the right fit.
Okay, thank you. I know I asked a tough question, so, because it's from my, my and a lot of, if, you know, when people watch this, they have an understanding. The eminent domain issue, I mean, it's kind of related. Like you get to a point where you have this one or two owners who are like, say, no way. So you say, okay, fine, we're going to just take everything, we'll just give you whatever the market value, whatever the fair value of this thing. So you mentioned something about it affects all, what do you mean? You mentioned about it affects all the project. Like what's the project and others? Who are the others involved?
So Sound Transit as an agency has the power of eminent domain under state statutes. And what our board chooses to do when we authorize a package of acquisitions, so the package that's going there, starting Thursday at System Expansion and then to the full board for recommendation, is 52 parcels. And so they're authorizing me to go forward and buy the property that's needed for those 52. Some of them are temporary easements, some of them are little strips of fee, simple interest. And once that authorization, then that's when our process starts to make an offer, to negotiate in good faith, to attempt to reach agreement. If we don't reach agreement in eminent domain, it's because we didn't agree on price. The step that we have determined that it's for the public's use and it's necessary for this project comes with that board action. And so then it's about negotiating the price.
And so if that owner, if only one of the 52 parcels decides to, you know, you're going to have to just take it from me. I understood that if one of those owners gets eminent domain, then everybody gets the benefits of that. Is that true? The other 52, even if they sell it, if they agree, have an agreement?
They bond early, correct.
So they'll get no tax, no, they won't get the excise tax and any of that stuff?
Right. And they'll have longer to reinvest under capital gains.
Okay.
So both of those are true. And then on relocation benefits, they're non-taxable. I always like to throw that out because any of the relocation benefits are not taxable as income.
Okay, thank you. One last question. If a property owner is actually okay with doing this, can there be an agreement that you do eminent domain, but, you know, they...
Like friendly eminent?
Friendly eminent domain, yes.
In a sense, that's what we do when we authorize it on everybody, if you think about it.
Ah, I see.
Everybody gets the same benefits. And we have settled one. I bought one square feet of land already in one of the jurisdictions recently. They said, sure, I'll sell you one square foot of land. Some of the things we buy are very small.
You know, I don't even live on the line. I'll sell you one square foot of land. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. And thanks for your presentation. I really appreciate it. The deputy mayor's first question got me curious. And it's okay if this is like a longer question that needs follow-up. But, and I'm going to make up a city in order not to picket on anybody. So let's say we're going down 522. We got Bothell, Kenmore, Cityville, Lake Forest Park, Shoreline. And Cityville says, no way. I don't want this. By what mechanism does that, like is there a way to not sort of have to scrap the whole thing if someone right in the middle doesn't like it? Like how would you proceed there? I'm sorry.
Well, I could say that there's opportunities for that city to engage with Sound Transit, obviously at the project level. We do that quite frequently. As we work with Kyle and other cities, we meet frequently with the cities, we meet with the residents. So there's that opportunity. But there's also opportunities to engage with other members of Sound Transit, including the Sound Transit Board. So I think, I would say that's probably the path that a city could take is to engage with the Sound Transit Board and work to influence that way.
Okay. And my question was more, how does Sound Transit make sure that, so like if someone, like I said, right in the middle just says, no, we don't want it, and they put up a lot of opposition, is there still a way to proceed? Because I think that's one of the fears you have being on one side or the other of a plan line, is okay, it has to kind of get all the way to the other side.
That's a good question, yep. There is still a way to proceed. So the answer to your question is yes. It's a hard way to proceed and it could be complicated, but yes, we can still proceed.
And I'll go ahead and just add on to that, Rick. Thank you for that. And thank you for this question. This is a, you know, as a transit agency, you know, we don't just build in one city. We build, you know, through multiple jurisdictions because people ride in between cities, they want to connect to other places. When you're building a line in one place in the middle has a lot of heartburn or issues that they really feel like need to be resolved, it's something, the Sound Transit Board can direct us to stop, they can direct us to keep going, they could direct us to, you know, pause and take some time to really like figure out what those community issues are. Like all of those options are on the table. I think that, you know, it's really, the board themselves will make that final decision. I think that, you know, it's really, the board themselves will make that final decision, but they're, in the meantime, while they're, while they're having that conversation and having those discussions, the team is still working to make sure that they're, at least in the other sections of the corridor, they're still progressing. So even if there was, like, a pause on one section of the project, the rest of the project will keep going. The issue comes on the back end, when we look to open service, when you're going from point A to point B, but point A, point five, in the middle, is a, is not quite ready, that's when the, the service might get interrupted or might get delayed. So that's, that's the risk of pausing or delaying.
Thank you very much.
So my apologies for the, the cold voice that you're hearing, but I just really want to thank you all for the presentation tonight and for making a process that typically is really intimidating, I think, for the public, really transparent and clear. It's really helpful to see all of the, I think, I'll call them controls, that you have in the process for fairness. And, and so I really appreciate you coming tonight and walking us through it. Thank you very much.
Faith, I commend you for the way you carry yourself in such a low-stress, low-conflict career that you've chosen.
It's not for everybody.
I believe that. You know, I would, thank you for coming and explaining this process to us. I think it's really helpful for us and the community to hear kind of all of the thought and all of the shawls that go into this. I guess I would just say, you know, we've, we've already had delay in this project, and if there's anything that I or we can do to help make sure that this moves forward without any additional delays, we would love to do so. And the City of Bothell, I think, would encourage us to, and get this going as soon as possible, because this is something we've been waiting for, we've been told is going to come, we're all really looking forward to it, and we're, we're pretty excited about what it's going to turn into. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I wave at the computer screen when Ariel's signing off, like that means something. Bye! I think I need to go up there. All right, next up is city manager report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just say, there's a few things in life that help make a city manager be grateful, and I'll say one of them is, is that when, when named as a person that Sound Transit's working with, there's a village behind me that really makes that happen. So thank you to the teams in Public Works, Community Development, Executive Office, City Attorney's Office, the list goes on. There's a lot of, there's a lot that goes behind this. And again, it's, we spend time on the things that matter, and this certainly matters. So I'm grateful for the team joining us this evening as well. I'm also excited to make welcome at tonight's meeting. We are now three months in a row, first meeting of November, December, and January, we've been able to welcome on new members of the executive leadership team. And we'll slow down that trend here coming up, but it is with great, great gratitude that I welcome Kwan Wong as our new Director of Finance here at the City of Bothell. Kwan has over 20 years of experience, as you may know, and most recently was the Director of Finance at Administrative Services at the Seattle Municipal Court. With the hiring of an executive, it also means that we had a vacancy, so I do also want to acknowledge of, that really, again, this is one of those firsts, this is the first time that I've had a finance director in permanency since I've been here and joined you. So really want to thank the staff and the finance department. Anytime a team member is, is missing, whether it's the director or anyone else, everyone else has to step up, and I certainly saw that in this finance department team, and they really kept things going through a budget year. And that, Maureen is our interim director, who we thanked as she moved into retirement and goes beyond. And I also want to do a specific thank you to Ted Rain and Gretchen Zandell, who've been serving as co-interim deputy directors and really doing a lot of the, the work going forward. And also thank Matt Pruitt, who, while both Gretchen and Ted reported to me, Matt made that work a lot better than it would have been if they would have been coming to me for, for everything. So I thank Matt for his partnership and helping support our colleagues as well. Overall, I'm really encouraged about the next steps that we have before us, and you'll hear from Kwan in a minute, I'm going to ask him to do a brief introduction, but I will just say that through the interview process, through reference checks, and validated by his first five, six days on the job, I would absolutely say with confidence, Kwan is a problem solver. He's a communicator who's going to pursue answers and seek out solutions, and overall, just a great strategic partner that I think we're all going to benefit from of having him in Bothell. So with that, I'd like to turn to Kwan and let him say a few words as well.
Thank you, Kyle, for all the kind words. I don't know how to follow that, but again, with deep gratitude that I hope to earn your trust and continue to perform as expected. And again, good evening, council members. I'm so glad to be here. This is my sixth day on the job. I'm counting, because I'm a finance person. But, but I think I would love to have more conversations with the council members, because I see my job is really to support and to sustain the priorities that you set up. So I'm excited to be a part of your team right next to me, to be, again, the problem solvers, to make sure that we sustain the growth and also preserve what we love in Bothell. I have 14 years of service with the City of Seattle. I hope you are not going to hold it against me. I am learning and I am also listening. That's my primary road for this, for now. But I also want to lead, but lead with a servant leader background, and I want to make sure that I'm here to serve you as council members, serve you as my exec, as my peers, and also I am here to serve the residents of Bothell. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm very excited. And again, as Kyle said, I really want to thank the finance team. Every single one of them really stepped up. I met with every one of them last week. And I also want to extend my gratitude to Ted and Gretchen. I mean, they did a tremendous work, and I am so honored to be in partnership with them. So I look forward to many more council meetings, and I, I'm really thankful for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. It's awesome, it's great to have, have you. I know, as Kyle said, Maureen, Ted, Gretchen, and the rest of the team did an amazing job over the past year, but it's great to have permanent, permanency in this, in this role, because we do have a lot of work to do, as you probably, on your one, with your one-on-ones with Kyle have, have talked about, there's a lot of work to do for the future of our city, and we need to get the foundation right. I'm really, really glad that it's you, that you're here, so thank you so much for, for being here.
And I just want to say, you mentioned, oh, Councilmember Aldrich.
You can go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. You know, you mentioned earning our trust. As far as I'm concerned, you've already got it. I think there's a decent amount of trust in between council and Kyle, as well as the entire ELT, and, I mean, we've all been through some stuff together, right? But, but don't, don't feel like that trust is something that you have to earn. We're super happy you're here and glad you're on the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. Just welcome, we're glad you're here. I know my colleagues have said the same thing, but I know just how much Kyle has been looking forward to rounding out the ELT, and, and he's just, you know, his, his high praise of you means that I'm just excited to, to be working with you. I do have one question.
Yes.
And that is, will you be able to join us at our priority setting retreat? Are you going to be there for any of that?
Councilmember Aldrich, I'll, I'll follow up with you on the hotline on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome.
Yes.
Regardless, thank you for being here.
All right, moving on, we have council committee reports. Councilmembers? Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. So the, I believe it was the last time we met, I was appointed to go to the AWC to represent Bothell, and we did vote in Wendy Wyker and Amy Falcone. For some reason, I was spacing on Amy's last name, but Wendy Wyker and Amy Falcone, from Mercer Island and Kirkland, respectively. So just an update. And there were only two people nominated, so it was not very contentious. They, they wanted it and they... Councilmember McNeil is awesome, remind me, that was SCA. There are a lot of acronyms in this job.
Thank you, anyone, that wasn't... All of the acronyms. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know there's going to be an RPC meeting tomorrow. RPC is Regional Policy Committee, and we're going to be having a discussion on the Crisis Senator levy. It's looking like it's probably going to move out of the RPC and go to King County Council for votes, so stay tuned for that. So just wanted to make sure that we have everybody's support for that from this council, so I can go lend my voice on the RPC tomorrow.
A strong, confident voice, yes. All right, moving on to, oh, Councilmember Aldrich.
Sorry, I know I'm hiding on your screen there. My update is that I was reappointed to SCA's Domestic Violence Task Force, and we met today for a new orientation, and it was just a really excellent overview of, of the work of the task force and efforts being made by King County, especially to, to help victims, to help, and also to prevent domestic violence from occurring. So grateful to be able to serve there and continue on representative doers' work in that area, and if there are updates, I will share them in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. I almost forgot, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting last week with police and fire, and we received an update from fire regarding staffing. We found out that the building is, for all intents and purposes, complete, they're moved in, but we're still waiting for a date for the open house for the public. They are still doing some work in the back on grading, they're working on taking down the temporary structure as well. So we believe that we will wait until those are complete before we invite the public in to take a look. And then the last item on the fire side was, they are moving from their CAD system at Norcom to Tyler Technologies, so there's been some challenges there, just in terms of data, but they are making that move, which is going to be good in the end. And then on the police side, the advisory council is being formed as we speak, and staffing, I did not believe this, I told the chief, I did not believe this when he told me last year, but we are nearly, nearly fully staffed for both regular positions and levy positions. So that's something that's very exciting. It's been a long time since we've been almost fully staffed, so I want to give a congratulations again to the chief and public for making it happen. So those are the, some of the updates.
All right, moving on to projected agenda discussion. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Zords to approve the consent agenda minus the item that was pulled.
Let me say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zords?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Fantastic. Thank you, clerk. Next up is Agenda Bill 22003, the public hearing regarding amendments for Title 21, impact fees for school, impact fees. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do have, with this item, there are really two, two questions being asked for council, and staff will walk you through that and make sure that it's clear. Want to give Nick here a minute to get his PowerPoint up, too. So let me just frame for you that what you're considering tonight, this is an annual, an annual process that, that the city engages in, in partnership with the North Shore School District. We've been talking about how we have a joint meeting coming up with the school district. I think that'll be, if there's ever any more information that the council's interested about how these fees work and are generated, that'd be a good opportunity to have joint discussion with them. But in the meantime, for tonight, we're joined by Ashley Wenshaw, who's the Deputy Director of Community Development. But our presentation tonight will be led by Nick Schmeck, he's a planner with CD. He also joined the organization about five months ago, so this may be the first time that you've had an opportunity to meet, and meet Nick. And so we're grateful to have him here tonight. And again, I'll turn it over to him to walk you through the two questions and what, put some context around what you're being asked to do tonight.
Perfect. Can you hear me? Great. Hi, everyone, my name is Nick, I am a planner. Thank you for introducing me, Kyle, I appreciate it. Just to jump in and say thank you for having me here, I am really appreciative to be employed with the City of Bothell, I'm having a great time in my first five months, and yeah, just thank you. Jumping into the presentation, we're here today for the North Shore School District impact fees. I'll be abbreviating with NSD for a lot of the PowerPoints, so just keep that in mind. Just to kind of hop in, since we have some new council members, I thought it would be great to kind of explain what are impact fees. There are tons of different kinds. Some of them include park, fire, schools. You know, how we look at impact fees is, when new development comes in, we want to make sure that that new development and that additional growth is going to be, you know, accounted for, and we want to make sure that, you know, that growth in the, that new development has additional demand and need for public services, such as, you know, parks and fire response requirements, and as well as schools, public facilities. So that's why we take in this impact fee. Specifically here today, we're just talking about school impact fees, but I wanted to set the stage for that. Kind of the concept of impact fees is just growth paying for growth. Moving along. Just to let you know, so we, as the city, are not necessarily the ones that are creating the fee. We are adopting a fee that is established by NSD, the North Shore School District, and we are going to be the lead agency for taking in permits. So, as you can imagine, the school district isn't going to be reviewing these permits for new buildings, so we kind of work as a pass-through, and we are going to be collecting the fees on their behalf, and then right away, we would be remitting those fees back to them. So as you can see on this first slide here, is the policy consideration and procedural requirements. The first one here, I just want to be very straightforward, this is going to be to amend the Bothell Municipal Code to move the North Shore School District impact fees to the general fee schedule. This is going to be a Bothell City Council decision, as currently the impact fees for schools specifically resides in Title 12, our zoning code, and we want to move that to the general fee schedule to make it more transparent to the public, more transparent to you guys, and less cumbersome, as we can just adopt all of our impact fees and other fees at the same time on an annual basis. So as you can see under that bullet, today, we will be using an ordinance in Attachment 3 of the Agenda Bill with a public hearing today to amend this Bothell, the Bothell Municipal Code. Moving on to step two here, number two item of the Agenda Bill is to amend the fee schedule to include the NSD 2023 impact fees. Explicitly, once again, this is not established by community development or the city. These fees are established through a annual update of the school's six-year capital facilities plan. Currently, we are in the 2022 to 2028 capital facilities plan. You saw a exhibit, I should say, of that capital facilities plan in the excerpt of the Agenda Bill. So as you can see, what we're proposing to you today, which was established by the school district, is to update our fee schedule for the impact fees to, for single-family units will be 17,963, and for multifamily units, it will be 2,625. So this next slide is also some more education opportunity and... So this next slide is also some more education opportunity and just kind of a glance for both the council and our public to understand how the fees work. This, just to say, has nothing to do with us updating our code today, this, in moving the code to the general fee schedule, this is just talking about how fees are established. So if some of you are probably familiar with the Growth Management Act adopted in 1990, this is a list of statutes that forces jurisdictions like the City of Bothell to plan, plan for growth. This RCW establishes the legal authority for North Shore School District to a charge for school impact fees. So therefore, the next step is going to be for them to create that six-year plan, which is where they establish those fees. And the next step under that is our Bothell Municipal Code currently under 2112 is where we have the legal authority to collect fees on their behalf. Next is where we are currently today, we're here at Bothell City Council to adopt these fees on an annual basis. So we'll be back next year, but hopefully it'll be under the agenda with all of the other fees as well. And for the last two, the city staff will collect fees from the new development projects. As you can imagine, Lot D down here had associated impact fees in all of the new single-family development. We have impacts that we're collecting on North Shore School District's behalf for all of those projects. And lastly, we remit those fees right back to the school district. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance amending the Bothell Municipal Code to move this NSD impact fees to our general fee schedule, as well as a resolution amending the fee schedule to include the updated 2023 impact fees, which was established in the six-year capital facilities plan adopted last year. Any questions?
Councilmember Zorns?
Thank you for this.
Of course.
And we're going to vote on those two pieces, right? So you don't need our comment on that right now, correct?
You're welcome to comment if you...
Oh, okay. Well, I think what I have are more comments, and there is one question. I was trying to find in my notes, I thought I saw, oh, was I at the beginning, that single-family is decreasing in rates and multifamily is increasing, is that what they had set up from 2022?
I believe that's correct, and some of that is they essentially look at the impact that those units are creating, and then put it through some form of equation that's, that gives us what those impact fees should be. So based on the analysis that the school district's done, it's showing that decrease for single-family and then the increase for multifamily.
Okay. I have to say, I, you know, spend a lot of time up at Wooden Elementary, and right at the base of the hill is a huge project coming in, and I imagine most of those kids are coming, coming up to Wooden. And I thought I saw the, the increase of students was about 200, 200 and some change, maybe it was closer to 300, and I thought, that's optimistic, because there's a lot of units that are going in.
Yeah, that's, that's great, and just for perspective, Ashley and our new Director of Community Development has been in discussion with the school district, and they are going to be bringing some new development projects for expansion of schools, updates, facade changes, new mechanical units, a lot of things are going to be coming thanks to some of these impact fees.
Good, because I have to tell you, I'm not terribly fond of portables, so anything that we can do to make student life and teaching life better is great. And then, did we get any information on public feedback to the school district about these fee changes, or did it pretty go by pretty uneventfully?
That would have happened through their CFP adoption process. We can either, we have a member of the North Shore School District here tonight, but we could also follow up with any comments or anything like that with like a memo to the council from the school district, just summary of comments they received.
Well, you know, to be fair, it's a little bit of a busybody question, but also part of that is, is the community at large good with these fee changes, or was there a huge outcry? There wasn't a huge outcry? Okay, all right, all right, well, thank you, I don't need any more details than that, but I think you answered all my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, it's always good to hear how our impacts, our developments, paying for developments, paying for the impacts that it has on the community. I had a couple of questions, so what was the, there was a reduction from last year, correct? Do we know what that was? Because I didn't have my habit in the packet, I didn't see it.
So, yeah, as we established, that's something we could follow up. There's a whole methodology behind the school district's accounting of how they arrive at this number, it changes on a yearly basis. It's identified in that six-year CFP and of how they arrived at that number, and that's something we'd be happy to write up a memo and get back to you with why.
Okay, and I've seen these impact fees for quite some time, they keep coming forward. You know, development should be paying for the impacts that it's having, but it's really important that we have that information on what it actually, if it's going up or down, how much is going up or down. Because that leads into the next question is, you know, development's paying for development here in Bothell, so if somebody builds in Bothell, it's, the impact fees are servicing Bothell, right? So as an example, I live in Bothell, but my kids go to school in Kenmore. So is Kenmore paying impact fees similar to the Bothell development? And how are we distributing those fees? Sorry, go ahead.
As you can see, so this fee that we're adopting today, Kenmore has already adopted, and they are paying the same share.
Okay, so my next question is Woodinville.
So I don't have it in front of me today in this slide, but Woodinville is, they have taken a different approach with Snohomish County. The numbers are similar, but instead of having a multifamily unit calculation, they have a extent of that, which is townhomes. Ashley, you go over it.
I think the other thing to think about with impact fees for this, since it's different than a city, like we have our boundaries and what happens outside of them, like we have inner local agreements with Snohomish County about development that happens there that impacts Bothell. And I think when they're doing the capital facilities plan, they're looking at the district without city boundaries, but the impact fees are related to how each city's impact fees are structured. So I'm imagining that when they're looking at these impact fees, they're considering development, not just in Bothell, but Kenmore and all of the communities that they serve, to come up with an equation that spreads out the impacts for each development.
Yeah, so I'd be very interested in learning more about that. I'm so interested in meeting with the school district between councils, hopefully we can have a joint North Shore community set, the councils can all meet with the school district, because, you know, as Councilmember Zorn's alluded to, we do want to get kids out of portables. You know, and that's not our job to do that, that's the school district. But if we play a part and we're collecting impact fees for the school district, then maybe we should have a voice at the table that can ensure that we're at least looking at that holistically across the entire school district. Because there is a lot of development that's happening in Bothell that may not be happening in Woodinville or Kenmore, but our residents here in Bothell are affected by that. And, you know, the borders of the school district may not be the same as our cities, but they do affect our kids that live right here in Bothell. So I think it's just very important that we have these, these open discussions and know where that money's going. I'm all for ensuring that we have equal and equitable spaces for our kids, and so that goes along with portals, but also goes along with, with impacts of active spaces, right? And we need to find ways to partner with the school district on those active spaces so kids can get out and stay safe. You just heard me talk about the RPC, and we're going to have a meeting about a crisis centers. I want us to start thinking proactively, how do we keep kids from getting into crisis, or people within our community get into crisis? And so I think the school district plays a big part. If we're going to help collect those fees for the impact of the growth and development in our community, let's see if we can work together and solve that. But I appreciate you putting this together, I mean, I've heard it a lot. I'm in the industry that actually pays these impact fees, and I'm a firm believer that we should, as we develop, pay for those impacts, but we want to make sure that those impacts are being distributed equitably across the community for the need of the community as well, not just in one aspect, so, thank you.
All right, I don't see any more questions, so, oh, Councilmember Dodd.
Sorry, I did have a question. So on page 100 of our packet, there's a note that says, it has the Snohomish County and Woodinville, and then King County, Bothell, Kenmore differential, and it calls out that if Bothell or Kenmore determine the Snohomish County model of segregating townhomes and having a separate fee, then they request we have that fee. Why, how did we determine which model we were going to use?
So I can answer this from maybe a land use standpoint and how our current code is structured. Currently, we, we do not, our code isn't structured to have the separate town, townhome fee, as we don't define that in our code. Perhaps as this discussion with missing middle housing continues to go forward, we might be looking at that in maybe the next year's annual update of this code, and like Councilmember McNeil said, having an ongoing conversation with the school district, and we can kind of hash out why Snohomish County and the City of Woodinville went that direction. But at this time, I don't think that is in the interest of, it would not work under our current code structure.
Yeah, just so you know, all of our impact fees are separated into single-family and multifamily units, so anything like a duplex would pay the multifamily fee, and so if we use the townhome fee, it would be calculating our impact fees differently for this versus all of the other impact fees. So I think as impact fee conversations continue, that's something that could potentially be explored, and then see if there's necessarily like a benefit or incentive to doing it differently than we do it today.
Totally makes sense, I was curious, I'm not advocating for changing it.
We were curious, too. So, thank you.
And I think, I'll just chime in, too, with, again, this notion of the school district approached the city about having a joint meeting with the school board, and I think we're aiming for the fourth week of April, if that ends up working for people's schedules. But again, I think there's a good conversation of, on this topic from both agencies of maybe providing some information for the school board of the type of work that the city's doing on the comp plan and considering of changes to our land use code, and then having them talk a little bit about like their methodology, how things work, and so then that way, there's a common understanding of how both of those pieces intersect together on both sides, and I think that would be a great joint topic potentially, too. So I'll be raising that with the interim superintendent.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for consolidating, or proposing to consolidate this under the other fee schedule. I think it's great, whenever we can do that, if we can just knock it all out in one shot, it's the best way to do it. I know you don't have an answer for this today, but I would love to see the calculation and formula just from a standpoint of, I think it's interesting, I think it's interesting, and would be insightful to know just how we go about calculating these. Also, the history of how we decided single-family versus multifamily, and not breaking it out by maybe square foot, or lot square footage, house square footage, whatever it is, so just more of a curiosity than anything else, but thanks for consolidating, appreciate it.
All right, all my questions were answered, so I don't have any more, but thank you very much, appreciate it. Oh, did you?
I want to move to the recommended action.
I'm sorry, Mayor Thompson, we need to ask for public comment, because it is a public hearing.
Are you saying I should read this?
None.
Okay, thank you. We can just all pretend that I did that, right?
And pretend that I didn't do that.
Yeah, all right, perfect. I, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to the recommended action.
Second.
Fantastic. I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Zorns to move the recommended action, which is to adopt the proposed code amendments to move the North Shore School District impact fees to the general fee schedule and adopt the proposed fee resolution with fees at the level requested by North Shore School District. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorns?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilman Ranky?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Fantastic, thank you, City Clerk. All right, we are going to take five minutes, we can have a bio break if we'd like, and, well, six minutes, it's 7:24, I'll see you back at 7:30. Next up is Agenda Bill 23004, Consideration of Reproductive Healthcare Resolution, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager and also admit that tonight is the first night that I understand the naming convention behind Agenda Bills.
I don't, I don't know how to work that into my introduction, but thank you for that. No, tonight, as you mentioned, we are returning with a draft resolution for council requests, per council request, just as by way of background and walking through how we got here. On November 2nd, 2022, there was a projected agenda discussion in a form requesting a potential marriage equity and reproductive healthcare resolution. As you recall, at our last meeting in December, there was further discussion, again, an update of, in respect for the federal action for the Marriage Act, Respect for Marriage Act, that, taking that without, outside of the scope of the requested resolution, which was generally supported by council. The staff direction that we received was to take a look at some of the other jurisdictions in our area who had passed similar resolutions and provided draft for council to consider tonight, which is what is in your packet. I want to thank our city attorney, Paul Byrne, and our Assistant City Manager, Becky Range, for their work on pulling that together. Tonight, then, before you, with that resolution, we recognize that, again, since this, sometimes our processes come through other means in terms of that there's, there's other stops along the way, or there's the study sessions. In this case, we decided to present the resolution to you as written or as drafted, but what I will also want to acknowledge, just in terms of, in fairness to our city attorney, who has to draft on the fly sometimes, that if there are comments and changes that are, want to be considered by the council, I would ask that we bring that back at a future meeting, just so we can make sure that the language is correct. Otherwise, the, what's before you, I believe, does meet the direction that the staff received, and would be ready for a motion and a vote if that's what council so chose to do. With that, I will turn it over to, back to the mayor to lead the council through conversation about the draft.
Fantastic.
Just a procedural question, do we have to move and second and then get into a discussion, or can we discuss now and then move and do all that stuff?
No, this is council's resolution, so you can discuss as you so choose. In order to pass it, there would need to be a motion, second, and vote, but the discussion can be free flowing.
Okay, thank you.
It's because nobody has any opinions, right?
Can I ask, shall I move and then, if somebody wants a second, and then we can have a discussion, or do we want to have a discussion now? I guess, question to the group.
Okay, can we get rid of the silence?
I am trying to get rid of the silence and get to some action.
I mean, you could make, you could make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a few, few questions, so I figure we probably should take those questions before motion, because motion is just discussion, and there's not a chance for an open dialogue. I had a question for the city manager around the resolution, and is this resolution something that the city has to, does the city have to take action on this resolution?
I would just say that, again, the direction that staff received was to draft this resolution, so that's, that's the action that we've taken at this point.
Okay, and that's it? And can you confirm if that was a, that was a direction by the majority of council or the entire council?
The majority of council.
We received some emails, we received some public comment tonight. Have we looked into working or reaching out to some of the experts within our community, one of which came, I guess, clergy came today to speak to us? Have we taken the opportunity before, or maybe language within this, to speak to them first before we put something forward?
Councilmember McNeil, with the request, as we understood it, that came before in November, there was not an outreach component to what staff was directed to do, the direction was, was clear to us. The direction was, was clear to us in terms of we were to look at existing resolutions from around the region, pull together a draft for Bothell City Council to consider. So that's the work that we did. There are times when, yes, when we're working on something either on behalf of the council or if it's on work plans and that we do additional work beyond that. And but in this case, in the process that the council has set up of, you're able to request work of the, of the city, the council considers it as a whole, if the majority of the council directs it, then we look at bringing it back forward. So again, in this case, we took the explicit direction of what was requested from council, which was not to do an outreach process, not to consider alternatives. That was, I will say, crystal clear direction to us of to bring forward a draft resolution of consideration.
Thank you for that. And I do thank everybody for the work that they've put into this. I know these type of resolutions can be difficult to pull together on short notice. Can you tell me which cities in the area we reviewed their resolutions and this one is compared to?
Yeah, with that, I'll turn to our assistant city manager, Becky Range.
Councilmember McNeil, I'm happy to answer that question for you. We did do as much research as we could in the short amount of time that we had. We started with the city of Kirkland resolution. That was a very specific request. We also looked at what Kenmore had drafted, what the city of Bothell had drafted, and also the city of Edmonds. We dove into those a little bit deeper and then tried to just look across the region at what the resolutions might look like.
Okay, and I think you listed four cities that we, what was the amount of time that we spent diving into those resolutions?
I don't know that I could give you probably, probably at least four hours of reading through their resolutions. And to be honest, it is a difficult topic and one that we're not experts on. So it took a little bit of time just to research it and try to understand the verbiage that the other cities had in their resolutions. And theirs were also quite different because many of them included the original topic of marriage equality, which we did not include in this scope of the resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I just, the amount of time and effort in the meaning behind this resolution, I don't want staff to feel that I'm not appreciative of that work. I think what, what I'm feeling is a sense of rushing to something that is critically important to get the wording correct. You know, we talk about being an inclusive and welcoming community. And when we hear from members of our community that are opposed to something, do we or should we take the time to look at things a little bit longer and not just rush to a resolution? I say that because I don't know, I guess a question of mine is, is what is this resolution, what is this document really going to do that federally and the state of Washington don't already do?
I think I actually, if I may, turn to the mayor who requested this originally and have you be able to voice the intent of what you were, where you were going to.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, legal and safe abortion is supported by roughly 70% of the population, depending on what poll that you give. And the Supreme Court took away protections that had been existing for just about an entire generation. So there's a whole lot of people in Bothell that can get pregnant that I want to know that their council supports them making their own decisions without somebody else being involved in that decision in terms of their own medical history. The other piece to it that is actually a policy piece is that if a different state that has made it illegal is looking to punish a woman, to find and punish somebody who's had an abortion, I do not want our police to cooperate with that. And I want people that live in Bothell to know that if they have friends, family and dear loved ones from a different state who have elected to have a medical procedure where it's not legal, that if they come and visit us, they don't have to worry about our police department. So there's also a policy component to it as well as simply wanting the community to feel supported.
Okay, so would this resolution be different than the one under Washington state law?
I don't know what Washington, which Washington state law are you referencing?
Well, just whatever Washington state has, whatever their resolution is.
I haven't, is there a resolution for Washington state? Oh, Jenny, Councilmember Alderks, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, the work that staff has done clearly lays out the abortion protections that exist in Washington state. And it shows that they are longstanding, you know, upheld over, over generations now. And so those are, if I'm understanding Councilmember McNeil's question correctly, those are the legal protections for Washington residents. And what this resolution does, like the mayor said, it provides protection from states reaching into Washington to prosecute people that they have found, where their states have taken away the right and then criminalized reproductive healthcare choices. And so I'm comfortable with this, with this resolution, the way that it is worded. I appreciate the, the policy that's stated there of we're not going to be helping states prosecute people who are exercising their rights to make choices for their bodies. And, and so with that, I hope that that offers some clarification and some help understanding it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Alderks. That's very helpful. So it sounds like we do have state protections in place. And if we have state protections in place, would this, if another state reaches in and we don't pass this, would that allow them? I'm not sure I'm understanding how this would protect us if another state, if the protection's already there, how does this protect us further? I mean, are we going to be able to do something against another state?
I don't think, excuse me, I don't think the city of Bothell would have the jurisdiction. Depends on the action that the other state brings. If it, if there's a different state that brings a specific action towards the city of Bothell, then we would have the right to respond. But it's difficult for me to kind of envision a scenario where that would occur in terms of what they would bring against the city of Bothell specifically.
Okay, and does the city of Bothell, we're going to follow Washington state, correct? I mean, we adhere to Washington state.
Law.
Our police department would, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not, so this isn't, okay. I'm just having a really tough time understanding this resolution and I want to, I want to get it on record that I'm very supportive of the things that are in here, but I'm not understanding why we're, I don't want to get into a, the city of Bothell passes a resolution and all of a sudden a state comes in and sues the state of Washington, Bothell's on the record and now we're in a lawsuit because we're doing something. I just, I'm not understanding, we want to have these protections. We have these protections currently under Washington state. We're a local jurisdiction. Why do we need to do this also? I look at this as, are we supportive of these things? And, and you know, for me personally, I am. But again, I'm hung up on a resolution talking about something which I support, but I don't know, understand the legalities behind it. So, so at this point, you know, I'm supportive of the things that are in here. I'm just not supportive of the method in which we're going about it without further discussion and understanding of what ramifications or things that could happen to the city without fully understanding and vetting this.
Councilmember Zornz?
Okay, so I'm going to weigh in here on a subject that's pretty serious. And I understand, I don't want anyone to take this, it's not a personal judgment on anyone, but I think it needs to be said. I personally know, and I have family members and close friends who have all faced unplanned, unsupported pregnancies. Know that personally. Probably less than half percent of the people sitting here on the dais know, know what a pregnancy, the announcement of a pregnancy feels like. If you look at the science of embryology, that embryo is a whole human being. It's not a, it's not a mass of specialized tissue. It's just in a state of maturation. Some of us, which I think that would be me here at the dais, has reached more maturity physically than everyone else here at the dais. So, science says an unborn child is fully human. They have the same full DNA that they have at four months gestation that they're going to have when they're 40 years old. And on a national level, as I was doing some research, 80% on a national level, plus or minus a couple of percentage points, do not support abortion after 12 weeks. They don't. And I don't see that written in this resolution. Good or bad, this is intentionally ending the life of an innocent human being. It is. And it is on the shoulders and the heart of the person who makes that decision. 90% on, in this country, 90% of abortion clinics are within walking distance of communities of color. I have a problem with that. Two, 23.8 women out of 1,000 women in the black community have abortions. Compare that to 6.6 of the white community per thousand women have abortions. That statistic is troubling to me. In 2022, both the UN and Gates predict a population collapse. In 60 years, the fertility rate went from 5.2, which I almost personally meant, to 1.6 in our country. That's a huge drop. Japan, and this, and this population collapse is going to, they're saying is going to be global. In Japan, adult diapers are outnumbering baby diapers. So in a balance of environmental issues and world economy, our kids are going to inherit a debt to GDP ratio that's going to be absolutely bonkers. So that's, that's numbers. Today's arguments have substituted different pronouns, but the same reasoning abolitionists heard and, and the same reasoning Nazi eugenics was giving, different pronoun. Do a shift. If you want to dismiss this as a religious issue, let me be personal here. I personally believe that people are made in the image of God. That's where I land. And what does that mean? It means that we're creative in our image of God. It means that we may not be totally omnipresent, but we could be sitting here at the dais and our mind could be somewhere else. That's pretty fantastic. And justice. Every child born, every parent can say, every child has an ingrained in them, a sense of wanting justice. Things are right and wrong. My problem with this is that it doesn't represent all of Bothell. And a resolution should represent all of everyone who's sitting here at the dais. If it does not represent everyone sitting here at the dais, and it has to be solved, then it needs to go to the people and they decide. Because it's very divisive and people feel passionately about it. Everyone here at the dais feels passionately about it, right? So I'm like Councilmember McNeil. I'm not quite sure what this does except to signal to a part of Bothell that they have support. Or does it also signal, we don't want to respect state rights? Are we going to reach far enough that we're going to tell our lobbyists, we want you to lobby that there is a national ban against restricting abortions? I certainly don't want to be on that page. I don't want to step into state rights. So I cannot support this. I appreciate the passion and concern on this. I know intimately what that feels like. And this is not the place for us to be making that decision.
Should I assume that the council members that have not raised their hand do not wish to speak? All right. I will make that assumption.
I'll go ahead and speak, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
I'll go ahead and speak if I have.
Absolutely.
I spent most of my weekend thinking about this one resolution, which doesn't usually happen. I thought about it in a number of different ways. And I thought about it, I would say, from a number of different perspectives. The first thing that kind of came to mind was, do we have a place to make this statement? And the conclusion that I ultimately came to was that we're here to represent our residents on matters that are related to the city business. They also have representatives at other levels of government, including the state and the federal level, that represent them on other matters of business relating to those jurisdictions. So what I ultimately came to the conclusion on is that I, I don't agree with us making and taking a position on behalf of our residents for things like state constitutional ballot measures and initiatives and anything else that they're already represented by another body specifically for. I don't think it's right for us to get in the way of that direct relationship that they have with their other lawmaker that's there for a different purpose. I just think that that's not our job. I think it is not helpful. They have the same ability to reach out to those legislators as they do to us representing them here in the city on city business. The second thing that I drew a conclusion on was how this came forward. I looked at the, I went back and I looked at the, the way it came forward and the sheet that it came forward on, and it was initiated by council members and not by the community. To our knowledge, we haven't been asked to do this by our community. There haven't, hasn't been any push, any public emails. No one's come to council and requested this specifically. So I'm wondering why we are pushing it forward when, if we have passionate people on council with varying viewpoints, why are we not advocating our position as individuals with our legislators? We have the same ability to do that as our constituents do. We can go, we can testify, we can hold rallies, we can go to public hearings, we can sit with our legislators, or call legislators, or write our legislators. So I'm not sure why we're passing a formal resolution as a council on this when, again, it's not something that was brought forward by our residents and is not related to any city business. I also noticed on the referral form that the resolution was being brought forward so that residents would know that city leaders support them and make them feel welcome. But then I went back and I did a little research and I found that we've already done this as a council in resolutions 1358 in 2017 and then in 1404 in 2020 after the murder of George Floyd. So we've already reaffirmed, we've affirmed and we've reaffirmed our commitment to a safe, welcome and equitable city. safe, welcome, and equitable city for all. We're just doing it now again under a different lens and under a different topic, but it's one that actually doesn't make it welcome and equitable for all because we're telling, depending upon which statistic you use, a portion of our population that has a different opinion or a different view. And again, this is a contentious topic. It's a personal topic for many people regardless of what side you're on. We've received a lot of public comment on it both now and before of differing opinion. We have a pretty diverse opinion up here ourselves. So, I'm not seeing why we would move forward with the resolution as it's written today or why would we even come forward with this resolution. That's not to say anything or take away anything that staff has done on the work on this. You've followed the direction, you've put together something in short order, but I have issue with how we're going about this and what we're doing. And also looking at the laws that are already in place in this state. In 1970, we legalized abortion in the state and it has not changed since. In 1991, the voters passed an initiative further strengthening that law, and that has not changed. So, there's not really anything that this resolution is doing that's not already, has happened, which again goes to the point of why we are looking at this in the first place. I think the last thing that I really thought about was, we haven't done any community outreach on a topic that's a huge deal, huge deal. We haven't asked staff to do it for us. We haven't slowed down to do it ourselves or direct to be do it ourselves, but we just, we haven't done the work. We haven't done the work. We want to pass a strong statement, stronger than a proclamation. We want to pass a resolution on something we haven't even solicited feedback on publicly. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right at all for us to do that. Councilmember Zornz mentioned that resolutions are intended to be things we're united on, and we're clearly not united on this. If we're to pass it with a 5-2 or a 4-3 vote, what does that say to our community? I don't think it says what the original intent was for this. And I don't think it would be helpful. I think some people might feel good. They might feel supported. Maybe not if it's not a full 7-0 vote on it. But we know for sure we would be alienating some in our community that feel differently. And do we want to do that? Are we comfortable doing that? I do not feel that way myself. I think we all have to ask ourselves that. I think it's helpful, I think it would be helpful if our state and federal governments engaged in the process that we put them there for and started talking about the individual right to privacy that was originally used in Roe v. Wade, as well as the right to life, which is mentioned also in the same amendment to the Constitution, but also in the Declaration of Independence and Article 1, Section 3 of our state constitution. Our democracy and our republic is based on public debate by the lawmakers that make these rules. That unfortunately doesn't include us. We're having a pretty, I think we're having a pretty good, I don't know, we can't debate up here. We're not like the other groups of legislators, but we're having a discussion, you know, good discussion. It's not heated, it's not combative, but I would like to see our lawmakers have the discussions that need to be had at those levels, and I think that they should. Because again, it's the fundamental way that our republic works. It's how we operate. It's the rules we've agreed upon. So, for all of these reasons, I guess to sum it up is I cannot be supportive of this today. I don't think I can be supportive of it in any fashion, given all that I've just, you know, laid out in my thought process. And I would say that if we did move to vote on it today, I plan to make a motion to table it as an amending motion.
I move to approve the resolution as written.
Hold off on that?
Okay.
We're not done with comment yet. Because I have a couple things to say. And I just want to point out a few things. This resolution doesn't make a moral determination on whether or not abortion is a good or a bad thing. It doesn't say that we support or do not support any individual abortion. This says that we don't want to be involved in that incredibly personal and difficult decision. And furthermore, we don't want to be involved in punishing somebody that made a decision that somebody else didn't approve of. Everyone in Bothell should have the ability to make this decision for themselves with the counsel of anyone they choose, whether that be their doctor, whether that be their pastor. And regardless of people's varying convictions on this issue, they should be able to follow those convictions, whether they wish to choose that or not. And they should have that freedom to make that decision without the government involving themselves in it or somebody else's pastor involving themselves in it. People say this isn't a local issue. I don't understand that because I consider law enforcement to be a pretty core local issue. That's one of the basic things that we do. And because other government bodies have decided they do want to involve themselves in this personal decision and have criminalized abortion, if we do this, at least our residents can know that our department here in Bothell, if they have friends and family that have had to do this in a state where it's illegal, they'll be safe here. And I think that's an incredibly local issue. The reason this is divisive is simply because there's a significant chunk of our population that wants to impose their personal religious beliefs on the rest of the population. The fact that it's divisive doesn't mean it's bad. It shouldn't be divisive. People should get to make their own decisions. Interestingly enough, imposing religious beliefs through legislation is something that Jesus was entirely uninterested in, in his time and his mission here on earth. When challenged, Jesus said, "My kingdom is not of this world," on that particular issue. So, you see actually a diversity of belief among faith communities on this issue. And I don't want to let any particular religious sect claim that position. There is a diversity of beliefs that I think are really important, and no one of them gets to own the Christian perspective. In fact, within Protestant Christianity, we have cautionary tales of leaders, civil leaders, who enforced religious beliefs. John Calvin was a civil leader in Geneva and one of the Protestant reformers. He famously had a gentleman named Servetus executed because Servetus, well, he was burned for the crime of denying Christian doctrine, including infant baptism. I think that a civil punishment for personal beliefs was wrong then, and I think it's wrong now. Now, people are complicated. I've read Calvin's Institutes. I own Calvin's commentary set. It's a full set, except for the Book of Revelation that he didn't wrote because even John Calvin was like, "I don't know what to do with that." What isn't complicated is that we should let people make their own medical decisions. And the sole purpose of making something illegal is so that you can punish people for it. And I don't want Bothell to be involved in punishing people for making their own medical decisions.
Thank you, Mayor, for your words. And I feel like I would, I would be remiss to also appreciate the, going back to, you know, the story of John Calvin. And I also just want to add that my family was very, like, this is my family history, but 500 years ago in France, my family was chased out of France with John Calvin, and they sought refuge in Geneva. And back in France, my, you know, what are we talking, 20th great-grandfather was burned in effigy at the stake for his religious beliefs because government got involved in religious matters. And I appreciate that we can, we can make a statement here tonight and say that government respects people's freedom without letting religion dictate what the government is doing. So, especially a, you know, a marginal belief from a small cross-section of the diversity of religious thought that exists in the world. So, thank you for bringing that up. It, you know, it's not often that I get to reflect on my family history, so, thank you. And if, since it seems like everybody's gotten a chance to speak now, I'm wondering if I can motion to approve this resolution.
Please do.
All right. I motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
All right. I have a motion on the table from Councilmember Aldrich and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the resolution as written by staff. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Manke?
I move to table this resolution indefinitely.
Second.
All right. I have an amending motion from Councilmember Manke to table the motion indefinitely and a second from Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to that motion, Councilmember Aldrich? You have your hand up, which is why I asked.
I'm sorry. I needed to raise it. I needed to cut it back down.
Okay.
I'm ready to move toward the vote on the amending motion.
All right. City Clerk?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak to the amending motion. So, several things have been brought up. I want to thank everybody for their words. There was a lot of different things that were brought up, but I want to make sure that as a body, as a council, whichever direction we decide to go tonight, I think everybody's very passionate about this. And so, I think for me, while I'm going to be supportive of tabling this indefinitely, if it were to come back, I would like to ensure that we do have the community outreach that would be necessary to ensure that we're doing the work that the community wants us to do.
All right. City Clerk?
To the amending motion, please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
No.
Councilmember Aldrich?
No.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
No.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
No.
It fails 4 to 3 with Councilmembers Thompson, Mayor Thompson, Councilmember Aldrich, Councilmember Dodd, and Deputy Mayor Alcabra on the negative.
Moving on to the main motion.
For the main motion, please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Can we speak to the main motion?
Oh, wait. Speak to the main motion.
I think we're a little beyond that now we've started voting.
You can speak to the main motion.
Can I get a clarification from the?
Yes.
I'm trying to think. I don't know if I've ever come across a situation where a vote was cast before discussion occurred, even though discussion is already, or there's been a lot of comment, I don't see the harm in allowing the discussion.
Yeah, I don't either. I just wanted to make sure we were doing things the right way. Yeah. So, in that case, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the clarification. So, I will be abstaining from this vote. I am in support of ensuring that we listen to everybody and we're welcoming community as Councilmember Manke has brought up. We have done, we've done this in the past. We have state laws that are in place, and I think that it's, once again, I think it's, what comes to mind is, it's not that I'm not supportive of this, it's just the method in which we're doing it, I feel, is not the appropriate method with reaching out to the community. So, I will be abstaining from this, but I want to go on record that I do support the things that are in it, just not the method in which we're doing it.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? All right. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
No.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Abstain.
Councilmember Manke?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Houses 4 to 2 with one abstention.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to study session. Next agenda bill is 23005, Consideration of Citywide Bike Plan. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one study session on the agenda tonight. It is consideration of the bike plan. It is laid out in your agenda bill this evening. There, there's quite a history in terms of efforts related to the bike plan, and while there's references back to 2015 and 17. The last time this was at council, there's actually two briefings for council, one back in February of 2021, and then again, the most recent one on April 12, 2022, to talk through the bike plan. There's been a public open house in May. There's been work being done with the Planning Commission. And then tonight is the opportunity to be re-engaging with this with the city council. The anticipated next step would be a public hearing in February. Joining us tonight are Steve Morikawa, the Capital Division Manager in Public Works, as well as our presenter Sherman Gong, who is the transportation planner also in Public Works. And with that, I will turn things over to Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is Sherman Gong here. Let me get my presentation up here. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Sherman Gong, and I am the City Transportation Planner. With me tonight is Steve Morikawa, SCZ, Capital Division Manager. And tonight, we will be discussing the proposed bike plan and the proposed comprehensive plan amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission. We want to thank you for your time and patience as we prepare this plan for your review. So, the goal of this bike plan is to develop a system for many, if not all, users. Through the public input process, the result of the plan is essentially a protected bike lane network. We begin council review of this plan with tonight's study session to cover the plan highlights and the recommended comprehensive plan amendments to adopt the plan. Tonight's meeting will be followed by public hearing on February 21 to discuss the plan a little further and see if there's any other additional comments. And then since the plan cannot be officially adopted until the comp plan amendments have been approved. A public hearing in March or April will be scheduled to approve the 2022 comprehensive plan amendments, and the bike plan will be adopted via resolution following that. So, the reason for updating the bike plan is to improve the current plan by incorporating current facility standards and concepts to provide a guide for prioritizing and implementing network improvements and to meet Pigeon Sound Regional Council and our own city comprehensive plan goals and objectives. Just to provide a little history, since the last time we met with you guys was for the bike plan briefing in April of last year, that was just to prep you for our public engagement process that we undertook in May. The public input was followed by Planning Commission review from June to November with our final meeting to discuss findings, recommendations, and conclusions on December 7. our final meeting to discuss findings, recommendations, and conclusions on December 7. The public input and Planning Commission recommendations resulted in an ultimate vision for the bike plan that consists mainly of the protected bike facilities. And finally, a CEPA determination of nonsignificance was just issued January 6 this month with a 21-day comment period that will end on January 27. So, as we discuss and review the bike plan, I think it's important to remind ourselves of the comprehensive plan goals related to bike use in Bothell. Transportation Goal G3 states, "Support growth and vibrancy in commercial, educational, and employment areas with a transportation system that is inviting for all travel modes." Goal G4 says, "Encourage walking, bicycling, and ride-sharing and taking transit in order to reduce congestion, greenhouse gas emissions, improve mobility and overall public health, and improve mobility choices for people with special transportation needs." The other two goals related to bike use in the city are Goals G6 and G8. Goal G6 says, "Create a transportation system that supports both fiscal and environmental sustainability." And G8 states, "Prioritize transportation investments to support the development of the Canyon Park Regional Growth and Community Activity Center, the Downtown Community Activity Center, the North Creek Regional Activity Center, and also other community and local neighborhood activity centers." So, just to summarize the vision that we developed in that process, there are no on-street bike facilities that will be proposed any longer. The ones we have will remain, of course, that are already on the network until a time when we can be updated to protected facilities. We will allow for neighborhood greenways, which is essentially the use of charos for neighborhood directional process, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. We'll designate downtown core bike routes to help people get through downtown. There's just simply no room for protected bike facilities in downtown streets. Consider road dieting to develop alternative protected bike facilities that, this is rare opportunities, but we may have a couple streets that we may look at, looking at doing something different that's still protected, but just not the same as our, kind of our standard that we're planning to adopt for protected facilities. Conduct parking impact survey on a case-by-case basis. That means where we have bike routes that are planned and there's a resident parking that's available, we'll do an individual study for each of those to see if that's a desire for that community. The plan has identified a few standalone connectivity projects, with one unique project, however, being along 96th Avenue adjacent to the Wayne Golf Course that calls for the implementation of charos to raise safety and driver awareness for bikers connecting to the Burke-Gilman-Sammamish River Trail. The ultimate improvement still being a protected bike lane, but that will be a part of a future bridge replacement for that roadway in the future. So, implementation of the bike plan projects would generally occur from three primary sources. Capital funding allocation to bike program, which would, which could include grants. The development of multimodal projects that address roadway capacity and bike facilities, and could also include grant opportunities. And finally, frontage improvements from private development. With limited resources and a long list of projects to implement, staff has proposed criteria to apply to the bike projects identified and resulting in the project rankings that are in the bike plan. So, equity is a direct link or access to nearby disadvantaged communities. Employment and transit criteria is a link to employment centers or transit facilities. Institutions is a direct link to college or school campuses. Recreation, access to, is access to trails or parks. Connectivity is access to adjacent jurisdiction facilities or our bike spine network, which is basically going to be the Bothell Ever Highway connection to, up to Thrasher's Corner via 9th Avenue. And then safety, does the project make a route safer than it is? The plan, the bike plan facilities proposed, detailed standards are derived from standard design developed by the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, Urban Bike Way Design Guide, and the Federal Highway Administration Separated Bike Lane Planning and Design Guide. These references will provide the guideline for intersection improvements and treatments and the details for the shared use paths, protected facilities, and the neighborhood Now, I'd like to go over what the bike facility types are that we are recommending for the plan, starting with the predominant facility type, which is the protected bike lane. So, protected bike lanes are separated but adjacent to traffic. Bikes and pedestrians are separated from each other, not physically, but will be with a, some kind of, either a stripe or a, what do you call that? Textured, textured, sorry, I couldn't think of the word. It's a textured treatment. They are always directional, and they'd be a six-and-a-half-foot bike width with a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to it at the same level, sidewalk level. They're easier to assign to developers as half-street improvements, and they're less visible than the bike lanes on street at intersections and driveways because they're a little set back from the street as a protected facility. The next type is the shared use paths. They are separated but could be adjacent to traffic, shared by bikes and pedestrians, and they're bidirectional, 12-feet cross-sections. They're difficult to assign to developers because they're going to be on one side of the street or the other, so you can't keep shifting them back and forth, so it makes it a little tougher to assign that kind of a improvement as a frontage improvement. And then finally, we have our neighborhood greenways. This is where bikes share the roadway with traffic and may take the lane, take the road. It's the use of charo pavement markings. They're used on low-traffic-volume and low-speed roadways, like 25 miles per hour or less, and they're excellent wayfinding tool through the neighborhoods. Connect to other bigger routes, other more important routes. These are the ways that will get, they'll get you there. So, that's kind of the plan right now. What the plan you have, there were a few minor plan edits that we are working on in the plan that didn't make it to your copy. They're primarily related to the maps and graphics, so I just want to kind of go over those real quick. Map number four, which shows the Ultimate Vision Network, will include the extension of the protected bike lanes on 240th Street corridor from Meridian Avenue to the West City Limit, which kind of attaches to Shelton View Elementary. We are updating the Parks and Trails Facilities mapping that was included on several of the maps by our GIS Division. They have a more up-to-date map that just didn't get included when the consultant prepared them. And we're just going to update the bike plan map titles and footnotes to be consistent. They're all kind of say, they kind of say some different things. They say the same thing, but they're different. All right. Moving on to the comp plan amendments. This is the second part. I would like to discuss these comp plan amendments and the recommendations that were identified by the Planning Commission Review, our city legal department, and staff. So, Planning Commission recommends that council adopt the comprehensive plan amendments. This will allow for the adoption of the citywide bike plan by action. The bike plan will be an Exhibit A to the comprehensive plan through a resolution with a draft ordinance forthcoming that will be provided to council. Other amendments identified included ensuring that maintenance of bike facilities are accounted for in the future operating budgets, advocating for good bike connections and to improve the ease and access of onboarding to transit buses, and finally, to require, rather than require, rather than encourage employers and businesses to provide convenient bike storage. So, the adoption of the comp plan amendments to approve the bike plan will allow city to administer developer requirements as we, as development just keeps going. So, we want to take advantage of that to have them build as much of the network as We want to qualify bike projects to receive and apply for grant funding because they're now in our program. And then the comprehensive plan amendments and the bike plan were submitted to the Department of Commerce for a 60-day review period on December 22 last year, so that will have an end date of February 20, 2023. So, our next steps to prepare for a public hearing on February 21 for council to give a head nod or let us know if there's any other revisions to come will be, will happen then and barring any other significant revisions to the plan or the amendments. Then we will hold another public hearing in March or April to actually adopt the comprehensive plan amendments, to approve and adopt the bike plan by action through the resolution. And finally, you know, this bike plan is a good start to the development of our bike infrastructure for Bothell. It can be funded and implemented, but the plan is a living document, and it will be updated to accommodate changing conditions and lessons learned as we go, as well as address non-infrastrucure elements of a bike system such as wayfinding, education, maintenance, and bike storage. That concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Sherman and Steve. I know you faced a planning commission with like six cyclists, including myself, and there's at least four of us on council, and we all had a lot of thoughts and feelings about the bike plan. So, the good communication and just helping us answer all our questions, I cannot overstate how great it was, so I really appreciate it. I'm being listed twice in acknowledgements. I've had my say, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz?
Well, I just have to add my thank yous for this, both to Planning Commission and staff that put in a lot of hours on this. And I think you said words that just resonated with all of council of eligible for grant funding just resonated with all of us. And I also appreciated you noting that this plan will have flexibility so that if we, things come down the pipeline, we need to make changes. Am I understanding you correctly? We can make that. So, thank you for doing this. I think you've done the major heavy lifting here, and hopefully those tweaks that are down the road are going to be few and far between.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Bike plans are important, keeping people safe, to the community. It doesn't matter if we ride bikes up here or our kids ride bikes. We all need safe routes and paths. So, I had a question on the public engagement piece. So, we have a meeting, study session, and we have public hearings. Are we doing any outreach in the community to discuss some of these, some of the plans around different neighborhoods and different parts of the community, what it looks like within their part of the community?
So, our public outreach process, we had, I don't know if we are up to speed on all of that, Councilmember, but we had public open houses, and we had two previous open houses in 2018 when we started this process to get feedback from people. I think in the, at the end of the day, when we approve this infrastructure, which is primarily for arterial system, we're going to, we're going to have to and want to get to a more neighborhood process that can involve probably, I would say, starting like around schools or going to the schools that would identify what they really, where those, you know, where those, those connections are in the neighborhoods that only, you know, the little kid can drive, ride his bike and knows what the best way and safest way that is, and improve those kind of connections. But that process, we haven't gotten to at this level. This is more citywide infrastructure, arterial system, and I think we're going to move forward to the more smaller neighborhood settings as projects come about and as we get funding to improve any specific corridor is when we have opportunities to reach out to those communities at that time.
I appreciate that, and thank you for your proactive approach on that. I think it's important as we go throughout the community, we can see where we have development that's done their share on their side, and then there's not further development beyond their development, and we are fractured in some of those spaces. So, I think as a living document, as you, I think, alluded to, we need to make sure that we're looking at it holistically. Because one thing that I was drawn to was the document that was left for us up here on council that I focused, keyed in on was the serious injuries and the injuries in general. And so, if, as we look at these plans and we talk about improving and doing bike plans and things like that, for me, what resonates is, is those safe routes for kids? Because if we get them in a place where they think they're safe, and then they turn into a place that's not so safe, that's what, that's what's concerning. So, I just want to make sure that we reach out to the community, understand how the community is going to use these bike lanes, how they're going to access transit if they're going to use them, and what that actual bike ridership is and what it could be in the future. So, but thank you both. I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation and continuing to work on this living document.
Thank you. I just, I'll just add response a little bit. You know, the safety considerations for bikes, they're always going to be at specific, pretty much at the intersections where you're, where you're exposed. So, you know, it's going to be very important that we don't, we don't have a specific way of how we are going to address those treatments. We're following the guidelines that the NACTO specify, but they, you know, each, we're going to work on those case by case. So, you know, that is, that is one, that is one, that is one specific area that is going to have to be, you know, that's, again, lessons learned. Does that work best? Does that work good? You know, and we're just going to hopefully find the best way to incorporate those.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sherman, for this presentation, and to everybody who contributed to this plan. When this came to us previously, I know that the request was, we want to see like a knock-it-out-of-the-park vision, and you delivered it. This is so exciting to see what is possible all in one document. And I also want to thank you for the prioritization ranking that you put in the agenda, starting on page 221. It's just really helpful to see it all laid out based on, you know, here's the highest scoring, this is what we can prioritize first, and to see the different tiers. And it also kind of gives us an idea of phases of development that we might be able to work on and, and at the same time, I know that that doesn't necessarily say how long it will take any one phase for us to do any one phase or all of them together. That is going to very much be in the purview of future councils, if I understand that correctly. That is going to very much be in the purview of future councils, if I understand that correctly. And, and so, you know, you didn't put, I noticed that you didn't put a date on it. There's no like, we want to get this done by this date. So, I guess, no, with all of those caveats, I would love for you to try to, try to answer the question of how long do you think this could take on like, you know, give me like, you know, if we're gung ho and we want to get it done to never, like where does this fall?
All right. Let me start that and then I'm probably going to let Steve answer that. You know, we're going to incorporate this as fast as resources become secure for projects. We already have projects that are, that have this under design and have this protected bike lanes under design. Our Bothell Way project from downtown to, up to Two Fortyth has protected bike lanes under design. So, again, it's already in the, in the works. We have a project on Two Twenty-Eighth, which is actually, we're sharing with Snohomish County from thirty-fifth to thirty-ninth. That's also has protected bike lanes in the mix. And I think, you know, it's just a matter of, again, when and as soon as the funding comes and how, how, how much we want to incorporate that. So, I'll let Steve answer that a little bit.
I think the way we're looking at this is we want you folks, we want the city to put the vision there and let's see if we can get the vision. It's, the environment and transportation is changing quite rapidly. If this happened about ten years ago, I'd say it was a long shot to get this done. And it's still going to take a lot of time, but that's why there's a priority list. There, things are changing. We're going to do our comprehensive plan update starting now through twenty twenty-four. Currently, we have transportation impact fees that can only be used for vehicle capacity projects, but we hope to be multimodal so we can do pedestrian, bike, transit, vehicle projects. So, that will help. We're seeing grants that there's more money in the pedestrian and bike pot now. They're not necessarily larger and I think this is part of the transition. Just the other day, we saw some potential asks on changing how we look at things. In other words, can a multimodal project not have vehicles in it? You know, so that would allow a lot of different ways of getting grants. So, we think there's going to be more and more opportunities, which means we can do this quicker and quicker. But it will take a time, a long time. I mean, we look at our pedestrian and our sidewalk. We have a lot of gaps in our sidewalk and it's a huge amount of money, but I think more money is coming in. So, I think what the council should do is look toward the comp plan because that's going to set the twenty-year goal and that's just a year from now. Another year or so down the road, there will probably be other opportunities for funding. So, hopefully, we start gaining momentum. So, I think that question's a great question and I have, I, I would say it would take decades to do the whole thing. But to make a substantial difference, I don't think you have to do the whole thing. I think we can make a substantial difference and I think we have a good shot if the trend of the funding mechanisms continue the way they go. So, I think I'm very optimistic and I would recommend holding the vision.
Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Manki.
I'll just finish with a little, a little thought that, you know, when I first came to the city, I worked for a consultant that had a vision for the downtown and the vision of the streets that were, how they were aligned down here in downtown at this main intersection. And, you know, it's only been fifteen years, but wow, it's, that was a vision that somebody started. It was like, you know, somebody said, let's move the whole street closer to the river and make this work. And it, it just amazes, amazes me that that, something that can happen sooner than you think and really successfully. So, that's all I wanted to say. Sorry.
Oh.
You're good.
Councilmember Manki.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just got, I think, four questions. There should be a pretty rapid fire. In terms of the, the protected bike lanes, you had a picture of the bike lane up next to the sidewalk. From what I've seen, that's pretty standard. Is that because it's more safe for cyclists not to have a curb there and be a little bit lower than the sidewalk? Or is that just for, it's cheaper to make it higher up? Or is there a reason that it's, it's higher up level with the sidewalk?
The, the, our protected, our design for protected bike lanes is level, sidewalk level. And it's only separated by, from the street with the landscape, landscape strip and the curb. So.
Is that for safety purposes though, or is that just a preference, like a city preference in design?
It's, it's somewhat safety because you don't want, you know, you don't want another, basically like a bicycle to try to, to, you know, there's just another lip that could, something that could trip or even walking somebody pedestrian visually, you know, they're falling, you know, off something that's not the same level. So, the, like we mentioned, I was trying to mention earlier was that we have, we'll have, we'll have this, even though they're the same level, they'll be separated with a textured, kind of like what you see, a textured strip, like what you see at the, these ADA ramps on intersections to, so people that are visually impaired can, can sense that, oh, I'm getting close to the bike, the bike side and can move back, but not have an actual drop off.
So, I'm the civil engineer side. So, there's a couple of other things. From a construction point of view, it's likely easier and cheaper. From a drainage point of view, if we have different levels and you have one, like the bike lanes lower than the other, drainage becomes quite challenging. You got to understand that we have driveways to cross and if you have, start dropping things like that, you have to transition and then you have to transition per code. So, it becomes quite complicated as well. This is what we think will work good. I think the other thing is we're calling it bike and we're calling it sidewalk, but it's one slab of asphalt and concrete. So, people could cross over a little bit. Now, you know, like if you're riding a bike, you could, if it's clear, pass somebody. We don't want to encourage it because safety wise, but it's also flexible that way. And then it's very interesting because the other side is because they're level, we have to start thinking ADA requirements. So, if somebody with visually impaired, like Sherman was saying, is walking one way on the sidewalk, we have to let them know where that left side is so they don't wander into the lane because the sidewalk is two ways, but the cycle track is one way. So, all these things come together and it just appears and taking it as a whole, that level probably makes the most sense at this point.
That makes a lot of sense. I, the reason why I was asking is I was thinking about the ones that I've seen in Seattle around office buildings. They have been level. They've been right next to the sidewalk and I don't think it would be as much of a problem here because we have less foot traffic generally on our sidewalks. But I've seen people on foot traffic either stop in the bike lane or veer into the bike lane to use it to get around other people. And I could see that causing some problems, but I, I was just curious if it was like a safety thing or if it was a preference.
I think it's the combination of things. And I will say one more thing. We had a very interesting conversation on education. And I think that's going to be a large component as well. And it's not going to be just educating bikes. It's going to be educating the pedestrians and the vehicles and the people coming in and out of driveways. So, we think that's going to be a big component of the program.
Makes sense. In terms of a large business park that's private, like the Canyon Park Business Park, I know that this applies to, you know, city streets and sidewalks. Does it apply to an area like that, which would be very useful to have, but knowing that we don't own the right of way in there, how do we negotiate that as a city and what's our, what's our current process for that?
So, Canyon Park, Sherman and I worked on this and that actually preceded the bike plan, which made it very interesting. But North Creek Trail goes through that. So, our intent was at least to take care of connecting to North Creek Trail. So, if you can imagine Two Twenty, which goes east west, that's one of the primary entrances into the business park from Bothell-Orbit Highway. And it wraps around and turns into twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that Two Twenty, the way we have it laid out is on the north side of that private road, if redevelopment occurs, the development standard is a twelve-foot shared use path there, which complements the North Creek Trail. When Wash Dot builds the Seventeenth Avenue Onramp, they're going to build a cycle track on one side. And on the Two Twenty portion between Seventeenth and Bothell-Orbit Highway, that short stretch, they're going to build the west side of that shared use path. So, eventually, as things occur, you should see a shared use path on the north side of Two Twenty from Bothell-Orbit Highway all the way to twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth. And we actually proposing potentially a road diet for twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth to get some sort of bike facility on that section. After that, they're more like local streets and then I think.
Yeah, we're like neighborhood green. There'd be more like the chero's in the local street kind of system.
Yeah. So, it is written into the comp, the subarea plan for that area.
Okay. That's, that's great. In terms of the packet itself, on page one forty-nine of the packet, or on page twenty-three of the actual bike plan, but one forty-nine of the packet, I was curious, what percentage of the plan is like rebuild or upgrade of current facilities versus brand new facilities? I know you mentioned part of it would be upgraded current, but I was, I couldn't tell from the packet what the percentage or approximate percentage might be.
That's a, I, because that's a good question. I don't think we've, I don't think we've done that, done that math.
Okay.
To be honest.
Not, not a problem at all. We can always, if we want to take it offline and follow it later. Okay. My last question is just around one of the, one of the proposed paths. There's one that goes up and over Norway Hill, which is, I think that'd be, if you're a cyclist, probably pretty fun to go up and over. If there was a new, you know, a new trail there that was protected, I imagine it's going to cost a lot of money, given the treacherous road there and the hillsides and the steep declines. But I did not see one going from that road down to East Riverside as a connection. So, I was wondering, why was that one not on the map going down to East Riverside since it's a main connection right into the heart of the city?
You're talking a hundred and twelve or one oh eight?
Yep, a hundred and twelve.
Okay.
Or it's got three names, I think, going uphill.
Yeah.
So, that, that is a very interesting road. So, it's a local road. It's not an arterial. It's not a collector. It's on a hillside that is a pretty interesting hillside. It would take substantial amount of money to rebuild that roadway into any type of standard that would be acceptable. So, that's kind of that hanging out there road, local road, that we're not sure in the long run what we're going to do with. We recently used some of our paving funds to fix, we call it patching, but you could see there patches that are a hundred fifty feet long and, you know, to kind of rebuild sections of the road. But frankly, we're in a quandary with that one. And we think in the future, at some point, our paving program, we'll have to talk about that road and what the future for that road is. We have a lot of calls for bike facilities on there, sidewalks, repairing the road, all kinds of things. But we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. So, right now, I think that one's off the table.
Is that different then than going up Norway? Because Norway seems to be the same. It's very windy. It's very, you know, I don't know if it's as landslide prone as the other road is, but it, having driven up there, it's pretty, you know, it's going to be potholy because the water is just running down the road. There's not a lot of drainage and it seems like a tough one to cut out the side to, to create a protected lane.
I, kind of made me think about what your first, your earlier question about rebuild versus brand new. I think, you know, since we have no protected facilities, everything we do is going to be a rebuild, right? So, every facility, we don't have any, we, we will, we will build sections that will connect to existing facilities. And then ultimately, those existing facilities will get rebuilt again. So, we're talking about a hundred percent rebuild, right? For Norway Hill, from my knowledge of Norway Hill, there's, at least there's going to be opportunity because it's not just a cliff on one side and then a sheer, you know, and then a wall on the other side where you have to cut in and again, create space to add a bike facilities where Norway Hill, there's, you know, there's going to be challenging spots, but not like the whole, the whole way down a hundred and twelve. So, our, our vision on that is, you know, and, and, you know, and every, every project, we'll look at it individually and how the best to, what best facility, you know, how we can get that facility on there. But, you know, just my experience driving along through Norway Hill and up and down a hundred and fourth, a hundred and fifth, all the way down, it's, there's at least room in the right of way or close to the roadway where you can expand to, to build a facility without having to create a wall or, or, you know, build out, basically, you know, you, you know, you just can't fill up. You're not going to be able to fill up. You can just cut into a wall and, and create, create space for it. So.
I recognize too that that's, I think it's number fifty-something on the plan, if I remember right. So, it's many, many, many years out. But final thought, I just, I appreciate that we're building for all experiences, all levels of use, beginner to expert. I think that's really helpful to do. It encourages more people to get out on the trails and feel comfortable, feel protected and feel safe. And I know having an unprotected bike lane, I wouldn't ride in it and I wouldn't take my kids in it, just being honest. It's what we got. It's what we used to do. But I like that we're doing better and we're working on more and better things. So, I appreciate the plan you put together. Thank you for all your hard work and it was enjoyable to read.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sherman, Steve. This is great. As a non-bicyclist, I think I'm in the minority. I'm looking forward to something like this. Like Councilmember Manki said, like when I grew up, where I grew up, I like, I biked all everywhere, extremely dangerous. I, but my parents, I don't know why, they let me do it. But I don't let it happen to my son. And we, the, the elementary school, like it's literally two-minute drive by car. But I don't let him bike it because even though there's some sidewalk, but it's still, I don't feel comfortable enough letting him ride his bike there. He loves to bike. I just don't let him. And I don't bike with him on day because then we can have to go on the street. So, I'm really looking forward to, to having this. And that's where the time, hopefully, when we have the public hearings and all that, the timelines and maybe funding sources will be more clear, even at a, if, at a high level. So, that we'll have really good conversation around this. A question I have about prioritization, why is safety at the bottom of the list? At least amount of points?
I think frankly, the safety is this, this facility, all these facilities are protected and they are in inherently safe. They're going to be safer, you know? So, our, our, our thought process was from, who are we serving with this facility? Where we're building, you know, we're building this bike, these bike facilities and who, you know, who, who in the city are we trying to serve and what do we, what's the purpose of them is kind of how we kind of started out with equity, you know? Who needs, who needs to use bike, bike facilities the most? It's people who cannot drive, people who can't get to, people who need to get to transit, people who need to get to work. So, those, those criteria just kind of raised to the top and safety being important, of course, and inherently, you know, like we said, with the protected bike facilities, it's, it just didn't, it really didn't need to be graded per se as a criteria, if you will, you know?
I thought it was, I thought it was prioritization for where to, which projects to go after first to create the, sorry, it's like the least, the most, are we going after the most safe then? If it's the least amount of points?
Kind of the way I look at it is Bothell has so very little bike facilities.
Yes.
That you're almost starting from scratch.
So, you go with equity. I agree with that.
Safety almost washed everything out.
Yeah.
Putting protected bike.
There's no delta between projects, right? Like.
That makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
No need to.
Everything. Yeah.
The, getting into requirement for developers. So, we're adding yet another requirement for developers, which means that impacts development costs, which means it impacts the prices for the actual consumers, buyers or renters. Can we do something about limiting those costs that we, that the developer will incur? And I know Councilmember Manki will hate me for this question, but pardon my, my ignorance here in this one.
Well, these facilities are not, they're not going to be anymore. Well, these facilities are not, they're not going to be anymore, um, from a cost standpoint necessarily, because developers already have to do frontage improvements. Um, we're not, the design would be, if, 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 if a roadway was required to put in a bike lane, they would still need to provide five feet in the street of bike lane. Instead, we're basically asking them to move the curb out and then add the five feet behind, behind the landscape. So they're not six and a half, so well, okay, get technical, Steve. Adding an extra foot and a half to what is kind of required now. But essentially, they still have to make that frontage improvement and that's where they put the bike lane instead of in the street, is now next to sidewalk, it's essentially the, going to be the same cost for the, for the developers, in my opinion.
I'll, I'll give you more history. When we started looking at it, our first go-around was using NACTO design standards. So the various streets per the national guideline had different types of facilities, many of which were on the roadway. So some of the roadways were, like Beardsley Boulevard as example, currently has a five-foot bike lane. The NACTO would say five-foot bike lane with a two to three-foot buffer. So if a developer were to have to build that, they'd have to put eight-foot of pavement, curb and gutter, planter, sidewalk. With a protected bike facility, there's no more pavement, there's five-foot planter, six and a half foot on the curb asphalt and a five-foot sidewalk. So, you know, there may be incremental costs. I mean, putting asphalt behind a curb is probably more expensive than on the road, but it's thinner, so you can go back and forth. So we think it's almost a wash in a lot of cases. The only cases where it's going to be more is if you actually, NACTO had said a five-foot on-street bike lane. And then now we have six and a half feet, so it's actually a foot and a half. So it is incrementally more. But we don't think it's that much more.
Yeah. So the cost that will get passed through, so to speak, is not going to be that significant, I guess.
We think in the long run it's about the same, but we have to understand that a lot of our existing curbs and gutters that, you know, and existing like 220th has a lot of on-street bike lane. So if that was the facility we're going to have there, which it's not, by the way, it would be protected because it's so crowded, um, that, you know, we're going to have to redo all that, or developers are going to have to redo that, or it's a combination of both. So it will be more money, I think. But I, we think in the long run, it's probably an incremental increase, it's not a substantial.
Yeah, good point.
Speaking of that last point, when you go into crowded streets and over the decades and like a century for Botha, we, we've developed streets without looking into, without thinking about anything but cars, but now that we're going to be expand, maybe if, if, I don't know, are we going to assume the same amount of lanes, same amount of, I guess, um, capacity that we have today for cars plus additional bike lane, bike lanes or this, for this project? And if so, then are we going to acquire land from folks or expand the land that we need? Similar to what ST, San Francisco is doing.
So, uh, like we kind of tried to explain is, is that you're not taking more right-of-way necessarily, except like, like Steve was mentioning, that extra foot and a half because it's not a five-foot bike lane, it's a six and a half-foot bike facility. But for, for roadway projects in the city, there's not really, there's only a few more streets, honestly, that we're going to be adding capacity to where we're building roadway, adding lanes, not very many more opportunities like that, um, and not needed really, you know? I mean, you can keep building and building, but you can't build your way out of congestion.
You're preaching to the choir.
So, you know, ultimately, uh, we don't need to, I think the plan, since it doesn't require necessarily a lot more right-of-way, maybe like Steve said, just a, you know, that little increment left, is, is not going to be something that we have to, that is going to be more, require more, you know, costs basically to build for us.
I'll take it one step further. I think it'll evolve. I think we're seeing narrower lanes, but we, again, we're in a transition period and there's many things that go into a factor of how wide a lane is. If you have a perfectly straight road, you could probably have a fairly narrow lane, even with freight there. But once you start at speeds trying to earn, you, you gotta give them room. I mean, you don't want to be in an 11-foot lane with a bus that's 10 and a half feet wide going around a steep curve.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think as vehicles evolve and as the trend goes toward more toward alternative means, or we can look at that more, I think already the city is trying to reduce the size of lanes. On Botha Everett Highway, we're trying to get it down to 11 and we're working with transit because transit's the one who's mainly driving that with. And they're coming around, which is a good thing. But we also have to think about freight. We still have large Safeway trucks, I'm not picking on Safeway, but trucks coming down. And they're 10 and a half feet wide. And if you put a 10 and a half foot lane there during rush hour, that's not a good thing. That's a safety issue at that point. So I think we are trending that way, but I think we have to be cautious in how we apply it.
I, I wasn't proposing that we narrow the, I was just wondering how it's going to work, assuming status quo, assuming everything is like today and then you want to add the bike, because I know you require, to create that safety buffer, you need to add.
So one thing we, Sherman did put in, uh, design standards, I think. When we look at a bike project, we're going to look at the whole street, not just the bike project.
I see.
So we're going to look at it in the context of vehicles, pedestrians, bikes. So in that sense, we have to tailor it a little bit. But let's say the road is busy. Again, it's very hard because now they're all protected, so the road can be busy. But let's say the road is busy and there's an intersection and we have to slow people down. So maybe that is a road that's prime for traffic calming of some sort. So maybe we have to address not just the bike facility, but slowing cars, cars down and vehicle safety as well. So there's something in the design standards that say we're going to try to look at it holistically.
So you don't anticipate us acquiring, the need for us to acquire property and have to go to, you know, property owners and saying, hey, we need this right-of-way? Oh, you will?
Well, sure. If you take the road, let's say we go down toward Kirkland and we need a drive, that's a protected bike facility. There's no room there for that. So there are pieces of that we would have to buy right-of-way to put the five or six-and-a-half foot bike lane. So yes, we would have to.
So do we need to make that decision on those budgets now, or do we have to wait till?
I think what you do is you, you, the plan is more like a vision and an intent. We still have to fund the projects, we still have to go through-
That's what I'm saying. When do we-
And we still go to the council and say, do you want to, is this in the city's best interests to purchase this land? To get this facility for the greater good of the city? So that's still a process we will have to go through.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You know, I like to think that, I like to try to be predictable, like so people know what they get, but I have no comments or questions on the bike plan. It's great, I appreciate it. I appreciate the questions that everybody else has brought up so far and just the discussion that we've had around this, but I'm super pumped to go ask people for money for stuff. Like I'm just really excited to see what, um, what we can do with this and seeing this plan come to fruition. I really appreciated the rhetoric throughout the plan, the, um, the, the words behind the things. I did have a couple of questions from just the conversation we've had tonight, though. You know, you mentioned the intersections being tough. Is there anything like a leading bike interval? Like there is a leading pedestrian interval? Is that a thing?
For like bike signals?
Yeah, like, like let the bikes take off a few seconds earlier, just so they can be safer.
Yeah, well, depending on location and warrants-
Yeah.
-the signals, I, you could do that.
Okay, perfect. And I love to hear, just in the last part of the conversation, the focus on design speed and the, the street as a whole. That, that warmed my heart and I appreciate it very much. So I'm just, I'm, I'm really happy with this and just want to say thank you to both you guys and the whole crew in Public Works and everybody that's worked on this.
Yeah, in fact, even Kenmore has, they, if you drive up 68, going up Juanita, I guess, Juanita Drive, they just created a facility there that has narrowed the lanes to 10 and a half feet. And Metro rides their buses and they bought into that, so surprisingly, but they, they got done and it's curbed on both sides of that lane going, going that way, on that section of Juanita Drive and Juanita Drive. So like Steve said, it's going trending, it's trending that way, you know? Slower speeds everywhere and, uh, you know, those facilities are kind of the hot topic right now, actually.
Awesome. Guys, thank you. I think, oh, this is a study session, so we don't need to vote.
Steve is like, no.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's down the road. But thanks, guys, really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on to council conversations.
I have a couple of things. One, both Councilmember Aldrichs and I, um, had the lucky chance of crossing paths with Austin Pisinich, who I had mentioned, I don't know, this fall sometime on his Save Our Salmon murals that he's got going around. And there's some projects that he's working on that most likely will be more independent of the city, working with the campus, but it'll be a chance for us to get in there and do some painting, fun painting ourselves, so stay tuned. And then, um, in 2020, what's that?
On this wall?
Oh, no, no, it's like on, I know, that wall would be great. We should have a conversation about that.
Kyle is like, I shall remain expressionless.
And we'd all help paint it too, which, you know, the nightmare continues. So any rate, um-
Aaron's back there like, your problem, dude.
Out of curiosity, I went and, went to look at, I love the start of this year, you know, AB 23001, which was really great. And I went and looked at how many agenda bills we had last year, 188, 188. Who knows if we want to top that or not, but we did some work last year. And then this is directed to our chief because nobody told me that yesterday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So a belated thank you to you and the department. So that's, that's all I have to converse about.
I'll jump in real quick next. I don't know if this is city doing or if this is development doing good work for us, but I was driving through the Home Depot over Christmas break and happened to look left as I was heading across the intersection and I looked up Holly Hills Drive and I noticed it was paved. And so I actually flipped a U-turn and went up the Holly Hills Drive to take a look because I, I know that's been something we've talked about for quite a while. And as I drove up, it was paved and it was paved and it was paved and I started seeing, I don't know if I'd call it protected, but it's more protected walkway on the right side of the street. There were vertical, I don't know what you call them, I don't know what the technical term is, but there was a vertical separation of rods between the walkway and the street and it was paved most of the way up. So I don't know if that is city paving or if that is development paving, but it's noticed, it's appreciated and it's great having that road fixed most of the way up. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to second the thank you on that because I went up and looked at it and tried to legally take pictures of it because it's really nice. And like you, I don't know if that's the project that went in or, you know, but whoever made, made that magic happen, I know everyone on the Hill is, is probably welcoming that.
It's awesome, but how do you illegally take pictures? Yeah. I gotcha.
Jenny, just jump in.
Oh, mine is like a completely different topic. So, um, I'm going to have to go check out Holly, Holly Drive to, to see that. I did see the work that was being done on it, but now that it's completed, I'll have to go over there. My contribution to the conversation tonight, because I am trying not to talk very much, is just a reminder that next Monday is Martin Luther King Jr. Day and we have an opportunity to, um, get outside in whatever weather it will be and, and rip up some grass on Wayne and put in some native plants with Whale Scout. I really enjoy those, those service projects and it's a really great opportunity for people to get outside, get some fresh air, get their blood pumping and do something good. So invite the community to join us for that.
No, thank you, Jenny, for mentioning that because that is, that is an, an important and great opportunity.
I'll be there, so all the cool kids will be there. So everybody join.
All right, is, when it, when we hit quorum, is it a public meeting? Do we need to notice it if we all show up or more than four of us?
We just need to tell Paul and he'll take care of it.
Okay.
We'll do a notice of potential quorum.
All right, the conversation seems to have died. It's been fun, have a good one, we're adjourned.
Recording stopped.